In accordance with Governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, please note in accordance with the governor's emergency order, we have provided public notice of necessary information and for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda at the city Concord website at ConcordNH.gov/archivecenter-viewfile/item/5511. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee have been, have the ability to communicate during this meeting and public has access to listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through clicking the one of the following websites, US02web.zoom.us/j/82965637988. If any member of the public does not have website access, they may dial the telephone number 9292056099. If dialing from a landline, you may call until free at 877-853-5257. The webinar ID number is 82965637988. If anyone that has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-230-3718 or send an email to finance@concordnh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have a reset vote at that time. Please note all the votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. And Mr. LeBron, do you mind just calling the roll, please?
Glad to. Counselor Bouchard?
Present at home alone.
Mayor Bulley?
Present in my office alone.
Counselor Champlin?
Present in a room in my home alone.
Counselor Fantasy? Counselor Grady Sexton?
Counselor Fantasy will be... I am present, I am at home with my family.
Counselor Keach?
Present, home alone.
Counselor Kennison?
Present, home alone.
Counselor Kradovic?
Present, home with my family.
Counselor Mattson?
Present, home alone.
Counselor Nian?
Present in my office alone.
Counselor Pierce?
Present in my office alone at my home.
Counselor Rice Hawkins? Counselor Todd?
Your Honor, Counselor Todd was in the attendees, he's gone now, he may be trying to get in.
Counselor Warner?
Here at home with my family.
I'll check the attendees again. That's three absent at this point, Your Honor.
Right, Rice Hawkins is there.
Yeah, Your Honor, Counselor Rice Hawkins is also in the attendees.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so with that, tonight we'll be reviewing the community development department, the library, parks and rec, human services, and then we'll be reviewing the capital improvement program. So, and then following that, we'll be going into a meeting of our city council from the finance committee. So, Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you and if you could begin the excitement.
Certainly, thank you, Your Honor. Could I ask you to take action on the minutes of the 20th and the 24th?
We have two sets of minutes before us, actually before that, I'm gonna do one other thing. I think Counselor Kradovic brought it up, maybe somebody else. We want to seal the minutes from the meeting of the 20th, I believe.
It is moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to seal the minutes from the 20th. Mr. LeBron, if you can call the roll, please.
Glad to. Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Bulley?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy? Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kradovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And the motion is adopted. So that we all have to do the roll call once, can I get a motion for both the minutes of the May 20th and the 24th?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded to move the minutes of May 20th, 2021 and 2024, May 2024. Any questions, concerns, seeing none, Mr. LeBron, can you call the roll, please?
Hey, Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Bulley?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Counselor Grady Sexton? Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kradovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And the motion is adopted. Okay, let's try it again, Mr. Manager. It's all yours.
Your Honor, members of the council, you want to be on, what we're gonna be doing is a management going through all of the, the rest of the departments in the general fund, through the capital budget and the taxing for the financing districts. And Matt Walsh, you know, for those two pieces, I'll turn it over to Matt Walsh as he traditionally goes through each of the items there. So you want to be on agenda item number four for tonight's meeting, and that's labeled community development. And you want to be on page 114. And what you'll see is, starting on page 114, revenues budget to budget are down $55,000 or 4.1%. And I'll give, I'll give you the pieces too. The construction permits are up $196,000. Street damage fees are down $25,000. Remember, I mentioned that in past, in the past, because a lot of those are work Liberty Utilities done and they're winding up a lot of their projects. Review fees are up $42,000. Transfers in trust are up $25,000. And transfers in the water fund is down $142,000. And transfers in the wastewater fund is down $142,000. Those are dollars that come in from those funds related to specific projects that community development oversees. When those projects go up, that, the number goes up. When those projects go down, those numbers go down. There's a lot of work last year, that's why it's, it's gone down this year. I'm making a change in the transfer in from water and wastewater. This portion of the transfer is for an allocation of wages and benefits for engineering and employees working on utility projects. Starting in July, we'll also simply allocate these expenses every week in payroll instead of through the transfer in process for a more efficient approach. That's all part of it. Expenses budget to budget are down $213,000 or 5.8%. This decrease is due to decreased wages, that's the elimination of the economic development director position, outside services, that's for engineering services, and transfer out, that's in conjunction with the reduction of the in-street damage from the revenue. And that's what I had for community development, be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, who has questions about community development? Okay, next.
So next, you'll want to be on item, agenda item number five. And that's library. So you'll notice in library, you want to be on page 119. You'll see revenues budget to budget are down $15,000 or 6.7%. That's due to fines for overdue books. As you know, during the COVID, we, Todd was Todd Fabian, the library director, and the department were trying to keep the fines down as much as possible and let people keep their books. Non-resident library fees are down because a lot of people couldn't really get into the library, and other, and there's small other revenue changes. Expenses budget to budget are up $118,000 or 6.6%, that's mainly due to changes in wages and benefits. Supplies are actually down $31,000 mainly due to a significant number of gifts and donations. So instead of budgeting additional dollars here for, for purchases, because the library has received so many gifts and donations over the past year, we're gonna be using those dollars this year. And that will, those have been accepted by you, they all come through you, you have to accept all those dollars, and then those dollars are applied to acquisitions. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Counselor Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor, really quick question. On the 2020, 2022 goals, Mr. City Manager, number six, engage in multicultural marketing campaign to increase community awareness of library services. What, what community groups are being targeted? Is this largely our new American community or our communities, or are there others?
I'd like, if I could, I, I'd like to bring Todd Fabian in to the meeting. Or actually, is...
He's here.
He gave me a note he was going to be engaged, is Matt there? Let me see, I'm going through the...
I do have Todd Fabian here.
Oh, bring, bring Todd in.
I don't know, do anything, should we let Todd in?
I think it's going.
Good evening, good evening, can you hear me? Too late. Thank you, yeah, some of the groups we are talking to, that we're trying to figure out a plan for marketing are Seku Star, the New Americans, as you mentioned, Overcomers of Refugee Services, and Essentria. So pretty much any and all groups that we can start to talk to and figure out ways to, you know, get them into the facility, also the Heights libraries, since they have more of a reach up there on some of the diverse communities. Yeah, we're, you know, any and all groups we're willing to certainly work with in the upcoming, upcoming years.
Great, thanks for that detail and, and thanks for, for this initiative. I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction.
Sure.
Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Fabian, thank you for your report and your budget here and the goals that you've set, I think those are all excellent. I think the library's been on a great path the last couple of years under your guidance, so I appreciate that. I was just wondering if you could provide any additional information for us on the status of the Pennacook Branch Library, any other additional thoughts? I know that we had several maintenance issues up against us that we discussed a few years back, and just wondering if you have any other additional ideas or concepts about that going forward, thank you.
Yeah, sure, me too. I continue to visit any property in the area, I just saw another one a few weeks ago, actually right behind the Pennacook library. So, the community's been great about notifying me if there's any potential spaces there. Nothing has come to fruition or been, you know, feasible as far as a, you know, a library kind of renovation or creating a space sort of like we have in the Heights. Facility in Pennacook remains closed for now, certainly with the pandemic. The HVAC system and the social distancing, it just doesn't lend itself to, you know, the ability to, to open that. So we're gonna open our Heights branch next week, because we can design, you know, distancing and guidelines around that. But for the moment, you know, the, the Pennacook definitely, you know, is, is, got some issues in the facility that, you know, we're, we're trying to find some new places and some new spots, but, you know, we just haven't found that, that location yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone, thank you, Mr. Fabian? Mr. Spoh?
Next item, Your Honor, you want to go to agenda item number six, parks and recreation. For parks and recreation, you want to be on page 122. And what you'll note is the budget to budget revenues overall are down $48,000 or 3.6%. This is mainly due to a reduction in camps, so camps are down 5,000, program fees are down 39,000, other service charges are down 4,000, and rental income, as people renting our facilities, are down $10,000. So again, revenues are down 48,000, expenses are up 43,000, 1.3%, that's really just due to wages and benefits, and a lot of it has to do with the retirement system I've mentioned in the past. Please notice that the outside services and supplies are both down in conjunction with the reduction in associated revenues noted above. So they, they align with the, if those programs aren't being held, those camps aren't being held, then there's no need to have necessarily those supplies or services. As part of the budget here, you'll notice that we've only been able to budget for opening five pools. It's because, not because of dollars, I would have included all seven if we had the dollar, if we had the lifeguards, but we do not have the lifeguards yet, and we don't expect to have them. We'd be, we'll, we'll be glad to do the five if we can get all the training in place for that. Also eliminated five part-time temporary positions in, in park and rec. That's results in point, it, it sounds like a lot, but it represents a 0.36 full-time equivalent positions, and these positions have not been hired in the past few years, we've found we haven't needed them, as you've allowed us to make other changes, and that produces a savings of about $18,000. Be glad to answer any questions.
Who has questions for the manager? Anyone? I had one question, I had a conversation with a merchant on Main Street today, and one of the things that they asked about is, they, as they are trying to get their feet under them over this past year, there's a strong desire by some of them to do more events. And one of the things that they had hoped for and said has been successful are events that are more frequent, maybe smaller but more frequent, and that are driving business, that are actually putting people in stores and putting people downtown to, you know, buy and purchase and such. Do you ever see, in the future, our recreation department, which have done some of these things in the past, do you ever envision them playing a bigger role in the community in hosting events?
Yes, if you like, I could go through, we didn't set this up, so it's a great question, but I have a whole series of things I could tell you very quickly about what's gonna be planned for the summer, and how, I think it'll dovetail really well in with what the, what the downtown is thinking about. So, just so you know, July 4th, we're budgeting for July 4th, so the Atlas Fireworks Show will have limited food vendors, and the Nevers Band will be playing with a rain date of July 5th, so that is on. We're gonna be doing the summer concert series this year, like summers, you know, like summers of years ago. So we're gonna have Tuesdays, we're gonna have concerts in the city parks, and Thursday night, we're gonna have concerts at Eagle Square, drawing people downtown into, to those areas. The one thing you should note, our staffing levels remain pretty low right now, because our park supervisor, which we moved to a model a few years back, was called into active duty as part of the COVID support, so that, that person is still serving. So we usually have three people on right now as, in seasonal staff, we only have one, we have another one coming on next week. So yes, so I could see us doing a lot more concerts and, and activities downtown as time goes on, and I think, as you can see, the, the costs really aren't that expensive. What it really is, is getting the staffing and having, and support staff to be able to run those programs.
Anyone else? Okay, then moving right along. This is good, very efficient. What do you have next, Mr. Manager?
We have human services. This is the incomparable Karen Emmes Williams. So that's item number seven. And what you'll see is revenues budget to budget, I'm sorry, you'll want to be on page So you see revenues budget to budget are flat, expenses budget to budget are up $51,000 or, or 7.1%, again mainly due to wages and benefits. You've allowed me to add a little bit extra time over there over the years in terms of staffing because of, of the demand, and, and working with folks, making connections with other organizations. We've been, we've been working very closely together, Karen and I, on issues regarding people seeking services and the difficulty finding shelters or hotel space, so, I mean, that's why you see, we wanted the increase in the hours for staffing to be available. As you can see, the projected expenses for the miscellaneous line, which is the Human Services Special Programs, is short of fiscal year 21 budget by $117,000. And that's really what's been happening, is there's so much money coming down from the federal government, and through the state, to different, to different organizations, different people, there's been less demand for services. And what we're hoping is that that continues at least for the rest of this fiscal year, but we, we envision is that to dry up sooner than later. We expect to be fully back to where we were going forward, so that's why we're budgeting. You can see we're budgeting as far as the expense for miscellaneous, relative to the same amount of dollars, not what we're actually experiencing now, because we think that's just gonna be a blip in, in, in time right now. Be glad to answer any questions.
Last question to human services, Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. So if I'm putting this together based on what you just said, is that, is that, under the miscellaneous budget, is that the reason that under the service indicators for, you know, appointments and emergencies, for example, the number for FY22 is 800? Well, are actually, in fact, if you look at all the service indicators, they're all projected to be lower than the actual numbers for the past two years. So, but, you know, so, I'm just wondering if that, see, if that is what that's based on, considering that, you know, if you think about when unemployment expires in September and the other safeguards that were put in place due to the COVID are disappearing, I'd expect that potentially there might be an increase in the numbers for service for FY22. So I'm wondering if you could tell me why the projection is, for the lower numbers is, is expected.
I don't have, Brian, if you would allow Karen to come in?
Good evening. Hi, so yes, Counselor Todd, I could be able to answer that. As the city manager had alluded to, it is because of the money that has entered into the state. I'll just give an example right now, as of the 21st of May, BellNAP, MRMAC, which are cap agency, has assisted with $1.2 million in between rental assistance and utilities. There's also gonna be the American Rescue Plan, there's gonna be another $150 million is also gonna be coming to the state for housing services. And, you know, in reality, for the services that we do, it's a lot of, that we don't know what's gonna be happening, I would not have expected for the past year for our numbers to be so low, given the circumstances that we were in. So it could vary and it could definitely increase, that's why I think it's important for us to, where we're looking at and working with our community partners to try to leverage some of these resources that's on the community. But our expectation, it could be that it could increase, but I'm actually expecting it, it's not gonna increase that much, as it has been decreasing over the years, and that we definitely see an impact of COVID.
Okay, thank you. Follow up, Your Honor?
Please.
Just, so I'm getting, I'm trying to piece it together then, so thank you, I appreciate that. And so I guess that you're saying that you're, you're comfortable with the projections as they stand now, and that, you know, the department will be able to, to handle the, the requests as they come in.
We will do our best, yeah. You know, one of the things that we're seeing, sometimes it can be much more demand than when we have manpower, as for example, what the cap agencies are, are looking at statewide have been 5,000 applications submitted, but only 2,000 has been able to be processed, so that's a lag that we're encountering. We are a small office, so we will continue to do the best that we can, we have to look at the moratoriums that are in existence, and one of the things that is in our favor is that we do also have really great relationship with landlords locally, and so I think that that's what we're gonna be able to look at, and also the, the American Rescue Plan, to see when that's going to be issued into the community and how that's going, the policies is gonna be around that, and I think that's gonna be very telling, especially for FY22.
Okay, thank you, now that's really one of the reasons why I was asking, knowing that it is a small department, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Emmes Williams, I am so appreciative of all the work that you and everyone in your department do, I know it's extraordinarily challenging work. I had a question relative to any issues that you're seeing with people who did not originally, have not originally resided in Concord, who are being sent to Concord either from surrounding municipalities or from the state hospital or state prison. Are we continuing to see any trends in that area?
We have, I can give you some numbers that, that we've actually accumulated for. So for unduplicated homeless cases so far for this fiscal year, we have seen 44 cases that have actually been all from Concord and the Pennacook area. From other cities and towns in New Hampshire, there's been about 12 individuals, and then from out of state, it's five. Under the IRS A165, there's no residency clause, so therefore, if a person comes to our office, we're mandated by law to assist that individual. From the state hospital, we also get referrals from them, and sometimes they are not from our community. In reference, we also take numbers, we also look at our numbers in reference to how many prisoners that we've actually assisted, and the number is actually really small, it's actually a little bit higher than what it has been in previous years, but I can also give you that number. And for the past fiscal year, we have seen six prisoners, and we have assisted only with $3,200. So when you look at our overall budget, it's a very small number, but that's what we have seen, but again, if they're in our community, we are mandated by law to be able to see them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Emmes Williams, what would you say our homeless population would, might be in the city, through your experience?
I'm sorry, I've heard some background noise, I couldn't hear you.
You know what, I apologize, hold on a second. All right, let's try that again. This is over a restaurant, isn't it? Director, what do you, what would you say our homeless population might be?
In terms of numbers? So I can, also I can give you some numbers of what we've seen in this past year. So this past year of homeless or at risk of homeless, has we seen about 203 individuals, but those are also duplicated numbers. When I speak with some of the outreach workers, they, there's some numbers out there between those who are homeless or living in their cars or with family members, about 100 individuals. But again, I don't have no concrete data to be able to say... But again, I don't have no concrete data to be able to say um one way or another.
So my, could you try to help me understand? When we talk to the police department and we ask them that question, they put the number in our community around two hundred to two hundred and fifty. And I think what I heard you just said is somewhere around a hundred. What what do you think the gap, the reason for such a large gap is?
I wish I could be able to um explain, I I I don't know um why there would be such a difference of the population that they're seeing. I could tell you um from what we see in our office, um what we see is a lot of families. And um now there's been definitely an increase in single individuals, but I don't know the discrepancy. I have not heard the number of the two hundred, I've only heard of um a hundred, that's some been from, that has been from different uh partners that I've heard from the community. But I can't answer about the two hundred.
Uh, Councilor Keach.
Thank you. Um, what percentage of of the homeless are actually actually families with kids? Do you have any any idea of that?
Um, I do. Just give me a second, okay. So for FY twenty-one, we saw about twenty-six families. And we saw about seven seniors, uh seniors is also the most increasing population that we have seen, especially in recent years.
Just to follow-up, Your Honor, are those homeless, is that homeless population a little different than what we sort of see on the street? I mean, they they are couch surfing and that sort of thing, they're they're finding shelter, but they don't have any permanent shelter, is that accurate?
Uh, yes, so the families, what we see is usually that they were recently evicted or they were staying with family, they can no longer um stay in the um with the family. Which may be seen in the community are could be one of more of the chronically homeless populations. So they usually do not come into our office to seek our assistance, whether it's because of the process that we have and whether it's because you have to submit um paperwork and identification to receive our benefits. Uh, so it could be a series of of different reasons, but usually the chronically homeless case, we do not see come into our office, and that has been since I've been here in um Concord, and that has previously been the the case as well. So when you see that the low barrier of shelter closes, we do not get an influx of individuals coming into our our office to request assistance.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Councilor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's interesting, uh most recently at the Public Safety Advisory Board, we heard from the uh Concord Police that their number is about maybe a hundred and twenty-five sort of chronic homeless and then maybe two hundred to two hundred and fifty total. And um many of those, I think, were in reference to those who are living in encampments. And so I'm just wondering, between the numbers that you have of people who are seeking services and those who might not be, I'm I'm just wondering if you have sort of a sense of the overall number here in Concord.
And now that you mention it about being the the hundred and hundred and twenty-five, that is mostly um of the chronically homeless. We see a lot of individuals also that they're in their cars and they have pets and they don't want to go to a shelter. Uh, so again, it's a different mix of individuals and needs that they may have in the community and what they're seeking. Uh, but that is what we have seen in in the past. But again, I don't see, I have not heard of that overall um large number of over two hundred, but definitely for the chronically homeless, yes, that is um accurate for what I've heard.
Very sad, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Chilton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Ms. Emmes Williams, could you just speak briefly to the challenges in uh in uh counting uh the the homeless population? Uh, I know that there have been efforts to conduct a by-name census of the chronically homeless, which has been a challenge. Uh, but we've discussed these issues at the Steering Committee on the City's Plan to End Homelessness, and it might shed some light for my my fellow councilors relative to why it is that it's very difficult to put an absolute number around this population.
Sure, I I think that one of the the issues is that people also move around. Um, and trying to identify them might be one of the the barriers that that we have. Um, and people also come in, come in and outside of our community. Uh, we hear sometimes from our community partners that they've seen lots of new faces that's coming into this uh community they have not seen uh prior. So that's why I think that there's some difficulties in trying to whether get the by-name list or actually know, because where do we go uh to be able to see that? I think that um an agency such as a um community uh homeless uh rescue, sorry, the homeless resource center is one of them that could be able to tell you some more poignant numbers, but I think that even for them, it's a little bit difficult because of where people um go. They also have people that may have been homeless, but they're using their address as well. And I think that that's some of the barriers of how to be able to engage and having people want to engage with um agencies and individuals, because sometimes in those communities, it can't be, there's no trust, and that takes time to be able to build it.
Thank you very much, thank you, Your Honor.
Um, I had just two more uh philosophical questions, but um, so you know, I think we all probably, we all watched what happened in Manchester last year, and we watched across the state what's going on um with the issue of housing and homelessness. Um, and you know, it's been reported repeatedly that there are significant dollars uh coming from the state back into the communities. And then, of course, with the federal dollars now coming our way potentially uh through the state, uh it appears or it seems like there are um large dollars uh in around the issue of housing, homelessness, et cetera. And you had mentioned that you partner with many of the folks in our community. Sometimes I feel like there's a gap where I don't really, I hear you um come visit us every uh spring and and we're able to share all the wealth information that you have. But as an elected official, I don't oftentimes know what's going on in our own community because the state is working directly with many of these folks, which I think you say you're partnering with. Could you give us a an idea, you know, who do you partner with, who do you work with? And what what are where are those dollars going to actually move people from shelters to to, you know, into home permanent housing, or from the camps and the shelters to housing?
Um, sure, so one of um the committees that I attend is the Homeless Provider um Committee. And there we have CAP, we have um the Homeless Resource Center, we have the church um involved. We also have Riverbend, so those are all part of our community um partners that we have. And so what we try to see is what is happening in our community and where where are those dollars going? Um, when we have a cap that are receiving a lot of those dollars in order for us to be able to do that housing. And I think the housing part of it is very difficult, because CAP receives money from the state in order for them to be able to move individuals out of homelessness or to shelters into permanent housing. Getting individuals into the permanent housing is what has been the challenge, even when we're looking at Section Eight. And you finally wait for Section Eight, that is like about a ten-year waiting list. When you finally get the voucher, the voucher is not, you can't find the landlord that wants to rent to you. And also, the voucher amount is not sufficient for what the price of the apartment is. So that's part of the issue as well. Um, we also partner with um Dedomic for Health, I I sit on with them. I also am involved with the Refugee Community. Uh, also, I'm just trying to think about the meetings that I attend, I'm sorry, um.
I don't need you to go through all of them. I I I guess what I'm looking for ultimately is when when the community recognizes the problem uh and and and, you know, I always say there's two times a year that are more difficult than others, and that's when, you know, in the fall, when the leaves comes off the trees, and then in the spring, when, you know, before the leaves go back on the tree. And people are um and people are going out of the shelter before they're able to go in, and and it becomes very visible and such. Uh, obviously, it's not a problem, just those two times a year, but you know, grabs the community's attention. And the thing is, they look to the fifteen of us to say, what are you doing to solve this problem? And again, my request, I guess, would be this, would it be possible um with you and through the manager to perhaps report back to us a little more periodically about, you know, tell us about those partners and what's going on and how some of those dollars are being spent, so that we have a better grasp of, you know, make sure we're spending our resources the best way possible, and so the taxpayers know they're getting the biggest bang for the dollars. But we're also um leveraging those dollars with those other folks in the community. So i- in a example I'll give you is, uh, you know, I've heard recently a grave concern about what happens when the government's executive orders are gonna run out, and I suspect they're gonna run out in the next real short period of time, uh with rental assistance and the whole landlord tenant issues. Uh, are we gonna see an onslaught of people, are we gonna be partnering with others in the community? What what should we anticipate, and what should we anticipate hearing from our constituents?
Right, and that's also a concern that we have as well, because we we don't know what that's going to look at. Um, you know, we're looking at right now, the two hundred million that is in the state right now, that is being handled by the cap agency, that's gonna be running out by December. Uh, this other money that's going to also be coming in for the hundred and fifty million dollars. Also, it's, everything is a time limited and time period, so that those are the real concerns that we have. I think that we are under the impression that doing our um eviction moratorium, that people could not get evicted. And what we saw, an onslaught of um addictions based on remodeling the apartments and folks being evicted, there is no um rental caps in in New Hampshire. So that's been another issue, we've had some individuals who are offering more than the rental amount in order for them to get into the apartment. Uh, so again, when we're looking at a one, you know, less than one percent vacancy rate in the state, that makes it very difficult in order for individuals to find housing. When we put on, and then a person might be who's um their social security is based on seven hundred dollars, where can we go? The rooming houses right now are are completely full. Uh, and trying to find housing based on seven hundred dollars, it's virtually impossible uh to be able to find. So you have to room within individuals, but there's some safety issues with that as well. Uh, so it it's, again, it's a very compounding and and with a lot of um issues that come along with the the housing, uh because it's just not one um issue, it's it's various.
Well, I, first of all, uh, I think it was Councilor Grady Sexton said it. Um, we're really lucky to have you, the city is very fortunate that you are with us. Um, I can't thank you enough for all the work you do. But um, as I said, it would be real helpful, I think, for all of us, um if we heard from you more often, um through the minute here, because you are a wealth of information, and oftentimes, um, we are the brunt of um of people's concerns. And uh the more information we had, I think the the better conversations we could have, so.
Thank you, yes, and I'll make sure I do that.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, uh, Mr. Manager, are you ready to take us to?
Yes, we're ready to go to um the Tax, Incentive and Financing Districts in the capital budget. So we want to bring Matt Walsh into the meeting.
You should do like a little intro music for Mr. Walsh, you know.
Now batting, playing tax and commit financing.
Mr. Walsh does not have his own lock-on music.
He should have it, shouldn't he?
This uh, this could be a lot of fun trying to figure out what it should be.
I think the theme music from Jaws would be appropriate.
Oh, boy. Well, good evening, everybody, Your Honor, members of the council. Um, tax, commit, finance districts, they're uh they they're on page one sixty-three to one seventy of the budget. We have three of them. I'm going to start on page one sixty-five and one sixty-six, which are the North End Opportunity Corridor Tax and Commit Finance Districts. Um, as you all know, that was founded in or established in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, it will sunset in two thousand and thirty-five, although we have sufficient fund balance to make it sunset at any time. We're being keeping it open to support construction of Store Street North, which is CIP eighteen, and potential acquisition of uh Sticking Avenue, eleven Sticking Avenue from New Hampshire DOT. Um, the assessed value in the district that's been created is about forty-seven million dollars uh for the coming year. It's down slightly because values are down in the district due to COVID nineteen um financial impacts on businesses and commercial real estate. Um, we are been releasing assessed value out of the district for the past uh uh since two thousand and five, essentially. Um, we are still releasing thirty-three and a half million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two. And we're projecting that that will generate about nine hundred, just under nine hundred thousand dollars for the city's general fund in Concord School District, State of New Hampshire, and Merrimack County. Revenues for fiscal twenty-two are down approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars year over year uh due to COVID nineteen impacts on assessed value in the district. Expenditures are essentially flat, uh and it will still generate a net operating income of about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-two. We're anticipating that the fund balance uh at the end of fiscal twenty-one will be two point one two two million. By the end of twenty-two, we believe it'll be about two point two four five million. Moving on, Your Honor, I assume you want to do all three of them and take questions at the end?
Sorry, I was trying to block out the music, yes, please.
Okay, uh, moving on, the next district is the Sears Block Tax, Incentive and Finance District. It's on pages one sixty-seven to one sixty-eight of the budget. Uh, that district was established in two thousand and three and is projected to sunset in fiscal year two thousand and forty-two. However, that could be expedited to fiscal year twenty thirty-two if we don't release any assessed value in tax revenue. Um, currently, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unissued debt for the district, which was approved by the council in August of two thousand and nineteen to support the Bank of New Hampshire stage and former families in transition redevelopment project on South Main Street. Um, assessed value in fiscal twenty-two is projected to be about thirty-nine point two million, which is down from a little over forty-three million due to, again, the COVID nineteen. Um, revenues are gonna be down approximately a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year over year, again, due to COVID nineteen um and impacts on commercial real estate. Expenditures will be less uh than current year by about thirty-one thousand dollars next year. Um, that's largely due to debt service schedules and less principal and interest. There is a transfer out to the general fund of a little more than four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Um, that goes to a variety of sources, including administrative fees to the general fund. Um, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of debt service for the complete street project, because part of the projects in the district. Forty-two thousand dollars and change to support the downtown services team and about two hundred and ten thousand dollars to support Pat's debt service that was issued by the general fund way back in two thousand and five and seven for the Store Street parking garage. Uh, there's also transfers to the parking fund of about three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, which is supporting debt service uh paid by the parking fund for the Store Street parking garage. Um, and administer, uh, sorry, snow removal costs for the former employment security property, the public parking lot there at Fayette Street that we've been operating. Um, uh, net operating income will be a negative one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars next year. Fund balance at the end of fiscal twenty-one uh is projected to be about four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We're projecting that it's gonna decrease to about two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars at the end of fiscal twenty-two. Last TIF district is the Pennacook Village TIF District, uh it's on pages one sixty-nine to one seventy of your budget. It was enacted in two thousand and ten, and as the council will recall, you just amended it and expanded it in uh on April twelfth uh to support the Hoyt Whitney Project, as well as CIP five sixty-seven, the Pennacook Riverfront Park Project. Uh, it's expected to sunset in two thousand and forty-four, but that could be expedited to two thousand and thirty-six if we don't release any assessed value or tax revenue out of the district between now and then. Um, and all of this is subject to very uh several variables uh in the district about future investments and 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 property tax revenues uh captured by the district. The assessed value um is actually up due to the completion of the Caleb Project Phase One. Revenues will be up about fifty-seven thousand dollars year over year because of the Caleb Phase One project uh being a hundred percent complete this past April first. Um, expenditures are also gonna be up about twenty-three thousand dollars because of our uh maintenance of new infrastructure associated with the Hoyt Whitney Project, which is supporting the interchange draw uh interchange development, Market Basket Liquor Store Project. Net operating income's gonna be a little more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we expect that fund balance will grow from about two hundred and forty thousand to a little under three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars at the end of twenty-two. Be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I have a question, Matt. Mr. Mayor, okay to ask it?
No, I apologize, I'm gonna keep apologizing, and I'll do it one-time blanket. I have literally music going on on the deck outside me, so I'm trying to be considerate, so you don't have to listen to the music, so please go ahead and ask your question, I'm sorry about that.
Um, Matt, under the uh the under the fund detail, the numbers, the property taxes, has there been other improvements in the TIF in the TIF other than Caleb that have contributed to the increase in property taxes relative to what goes into the TIF?
For the Pennacook District, yes, there uh there is other development that's occurred in. For the Pennecook District, yes, there is other development that's occurred in the district over time. Unrelated to Caleb, some of that is, for example, the medical office building at 4 Crescent Street. And there's been small stuff here and there at a couple of properties, which I can't recite to you off the top of my head, but have occurred in the district, which are driving property tax group. But the lion's share of the TIF revenue that we currently collect is associated with the Caleb property at 33 Canal Street and the medical office building at 4 Crescent Street.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions, TIF districts? Okay, that completes our TIF district conversation. At this time, we can move on to our capital projects, CIP. And Mr. Walsh, do you want to do these by category like we typically do?
That's how we're prepared to proceed, Your Honor, yes.
That works fine.
Hey, just a couple of quick opening remarks and then I'll jump right into it. So capital improvement projects by category begins on page 212. There are some projects that are asterisked in the CIP. Typically, those are projects which are carried into CIP but are not being appropriate as part of your budget resolution that you'll be voting on later this month. And those projects are typically dependent upon grants or donations or other funding sources that haven't been secured yet. This year, we have two of them, which I'll talk about when we get to them. We have about 45 projects in the CIP this year for just under $13.5 million combined. After asterisked projects, we'll be appropriating about $12,42,749. Our bond, our general fund bond amount, which is usually of interest to the council, is $4,960,000 for fiscal '22. We typically try to keep it right around $5 million, so that's our target. It has been our target for quite a long time. The overall CIP is 10 years long, all in currently for fiscal years '22 through '31. The total capital improvement program is about $333 million. So just some background information. Your first category is the airport, which is on page 212. There is only one project that is proposed in fiscal '22. It is $10,000 in capital transfer from the airport fund for tree removal at the airport to comply with FAA regulations. And that is the category, Your Honor.
Tell you what, we'll just kind of, if you complete them, we'll just ask if anybody has any questions regarding airport. That's okay. And seeing that, we'll move on to Arena.
Next one is Arena, Your Honor. It's on page 214. There's only one project. It is CIP 64, which is Arena Improvements. $160,000 in arena-supported bonds. $140,000 to replace the Zamboni, which General Services is telling us is 14 years old and needs to be done. And then $20,000 for environmental compliance related to our ammonia system that is used for ice making at the arena. And that is the category.
Anybody, Arena? So it's really been 14 years since we spent the $75,000 on the used Zamboni?
That's what I've been told by GSD.
Wow. Okay. Bridges?
Bridges, Your Honor, page 215. There was one project at the CIP 518, a bridge and dam maintenance. For way of trivia, the city owns 20 bridges, which are municipal bridges. $320,000 of highway reserve funds in fiscal '22. We'll be working on the horse, the bridge at Horst Hill Road over the Kentucky River. $20,000 for concrete testing and lifecycle analysis. It's really CIP planning for future renovations. The bridge at Hoyt Road over Hayward Brook, $140,000 of concrete repair there. And then Courier Road at Ashbrook, $160,000 of concrete repairs, membrane, guardrail replacement. And if we have any dollars left over, we'll also be pressure washing those bridges as well. And that's the category, Your Honor.
Bridges, anyone? Okay, cemeteries?
Cemeteries, Your Honor, also on page 215. There is one project at the CIP 587 Cemetery Improvements. We have 13 cemeteries that we maintain throughout the city. $80,000 of general fund bonds for continued paving at Blossom Hill Cemetery. And we've been paving up there for the last many years. There's a lot of miles of road up there. That's the category.
Cemeteries? Mr. Mayor?
Council always asks, so I figure I'll offer it. The cemeteries will all be in great condition for Memorial Day. If you're asked.
Counsel Keach?
Thank you. Having spent the last week up there, I will tell you that it is in great shape, but the roads are not in great shape, so that is my very well spent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, downtown?
Actually, Your Honor, we missed community planning and implementation. There are no projects in '22 in that category, but just wanted to mention that.
Sorry about that, you're right. Okay, and there's no projects in downtown or economic development, correct?
You're correct, Your Honor.
So, unless somebody has any questions about those? Why don't we just go to fire vehicles?
Our vehicles is on page 217. There's one project at CIP 4, which is a fire department vehicle replacement. Total of $765,000 in fiscal '22. Of that total, $695,000 will be general fund bonds. We're going to be replacing ambulances four and five, which were purchased in 2017. Those are $275,000 apiece. They will be moved to our reserve fleet and then older ambulances in the reserve fleet will be sent to auction. That's our normal operating procedure for large equipment and fire department. We're also going to be replacing the fire alarm utility truck, which is 2012. The vehicle will be auctioned. The fire alarm division is going to be maintaining two bucket trucks. One, that's going to be a small unit that is going to be used for routine repairs of traffic signals and other things like that, that's easier to maneuver in traffic. And then a larger vehicle that they need for when they need to actually pull wire for the fire alarm system and fiber and things like that. Last vehicle is a 2013 command vehicle, which will be going to the reserve fleet and a 2011 vehicle in reserve will be auctioned. In that category, Your Honor.
Anyone, fire vehicles? We have two. Counsel Metz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Walsh, when you spoke about auctioning off the older vehicles that were in reserve, what happens to the money that comes out of those auctions?
I'm going to defer to Mr. LeBrun on that. Those dollars are taken back into the operation as a revenue, so we make the sale as a revenue. So we take it in as revenue.
Okay, thank you. What kind of, excuse me, follow-up, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
What kind of return do you get? Or is there, say, pretty low dollars on the auction aspect of it when you get to that point?
Yeah, they tend not to be a lot of dollars. Most of these vehicles, by the time we get rid of them, as you can see here, 2011 and 2013, you're talking about, you know, eight and 10-year vehicles that have really been used pretty hard for the services they're providing in the fire department or any of the other operations. They go through a lot of repairs and maintenance before they finally get rid of them. So they're not worth a whole lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Pierce?
Thank you, just an organizational question. Why are the bucket trucks and the cable running? Why does that go to the fire department and not General Services?
City Council put that there decades ago when they did the General Services, established General Services. It's something we've looked at over time, determining whether or not we should. First of all, it's a great question. We ended up eliminating a position as part of that within the fire department many, many, many years ago, two or three recessions ago. So really a position behind in terms of running cable and handling the fire alarm positions. The idea is that as we, over the next year or so, we're going to have to look at, say, what is the future for that? Should it belong in General Services? Should it be in outside services? Some of it would be outside services category, or should it stay in the fire department? One of the reasons it stays in the fire department is, of course, is because it has to do with the traffic signals. They can actually go out there, they're here 24/7, and they can respond. We can pull people in and they can respond and make sure those traffic signals get reset. So if we were in a small community that didn't have many traffic signals, it'd be easy to have it, be simply a simple maintenance thing. But because we do that and they also handle the fire alarm system within the city, and this is for, you know, connections. A lot of, as you know, a lot of the fire alarms connected to the commercial buildings are still hardwired. We're moving to a radio control system, but that's going to be a number of years. That's a phased plan over, I think, probably seven or eight years.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Counsel Keach?
Thank you. Mr. LeBrun, just, it's more of an accounting question, I think. The fact that the original rescues were purchased through capital dollars and not fire department dollars, wouldn't it make sense that any revenue from the auction go back to the capital budget and not the fire department?
But it doesn't necessarily go back to the fire department. It goes back into the general fund operation overall. By the time that those pieces of equipment are actually disposed of, the debt service on all those items are paid. So if you think about it as the revenue coming in is basically offsetting some of the debt service on the new vehicles that are being purchased. So, you know, it's all part of the general fund and it all kind of flows together.
So it just offsets the cost of the new purchase?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing that, I think it takes to golf, please?
Yes, golf, Your Honor, it's on page 218. There are two projects in fiscal '22. The first one is CIP 235. $420,000 total, of which $385,000 will be general fund bond and $35,000 is golf fund-supported bonds. $260,000 for irrigation improvements primarily at the 10th and 16th holes, along with water meter pit improvements per General Services recommendations. $100,000, I'm sorry, $130,000 for tree removal in additions in accordance with the U.S. Golf Association recommendations, as well as $30,000 to hire an architect to design additional improvements to the course in accordance with the U.S. Golf Association recommendations. There's, next project is 530, which is golf course equipment. $105,000 all golf-supported bonds. $75,000 to replace a 1980 bed knife grinder and reel grinder and $30,000 to replace a utility vehicle that's used at the course. And that is the category.
Golf? Okay, Counsel Collins not here, so I think you will go off on easier. How about General Service Vehicles?
General Service Vehicles, page 219. One project is CIP 121. $1,655,000 of funding. It's a mixture of general fund, water, and sewer bonds. This is up considerably over the last couple of years to maintain the fleet appropriately. Key highlights are as follows. $380,000 to replace two sidewalk tractors. $290,000 to replace a front-end loader. $210,000 to replace a six-wheel dump truck. Those are the large dump trucks that we use. $140,000 to replace one backhoe. $140,000 to replace a cutaway van, which is really a box truck with cutouts that they can access on the side for tools. $198,000 for three skid steer loaders. And then the rest of the funds are divvied up among smaller pieces of equipment. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Fennessey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The sidewalk tractors, are those the vehicles that remove snow on the sidewalks?
That is correct.
Okay, and is, do we normally replace multiple at the same time? Or do they observe some additional wear and tear?
I think the manager wants to field that one.
So in this case, yes, you, because we bought them at the same time. What happened was the, when the council decided to expand the sidewalks maintenance program, built more sidewalks and really wanted to, but remember, we have SafeWalk Schools program. We dramatically expanded quickly, we can get to the sidewalks. The way we were able to do that was through the city council's management of the budgets and in some good winters, we were able to use surplus funds and we went out and bought those pieces of equipment. And so now those are getting older, those are coming due for replacement. So they're essentially, they were bought at the same time, they're wearing out at the same time, and it's time to replace them.
Just a quick follow-up. Do you anticipate, Mr. Manager, that we'll continue a cycle of replacing two at the same time?
I do, because what we do is if you look at it, it's part of a whole series of programs. If you look at $380,000 out of $1.7 million, it's still a portion. So you're always going to be replacing at least a million dollars' worth of equipment every single year. And the reason you've done that, the reason that that number is as big as that number is, so sometimes it's up to obviously a million and a half, is that what the council decided, and we worked a plan with General Services, where we actually had to, because of, again, the recession of the past, reduce staffing. And when we reduced the staffing, we realized the fact that we want to make sure that we have enough people. When I said staffing, staffing in the fleet maintenance area to maintain this equipment. And so what happens is particularly when, during a storm or during the winter, when things are occurring, we want to make sure we have the staff in place and we have the decent enough equipment to maintain them. Years ago, before the city council expanded the sidewalk maintenance program, we had a lot of older equipment. By replacing it with new equipment, we were actually able to increase the amount of sidewalks we do by, I think, about a third just by having newer equipment that wasn't breaking down all the time. So you figure every time a piece of equipment breaks down, it's out on the middle of Loudon Road someplace, you've got to go pick it up, bring it back to the shop up on, on New State Street, get it fixed, get it back on the street over on Loudon Road. You could miss a whole storm. So the idea is have good equipment, make sure you have well-trained staff, but we have actually less staff. But it seems to be working quite well because we have a lot less breakdowns on the road.
Good. Counsel Pierce?
Thank you. For the, for the manager, are these sidewalk plows used solely for plowing snow? There's no other use for the summertime or like that, they're just used in the winter?
Why don't I bring Mr. Chesley, or if he wants, Mr. Major, in? And he could talk about what they're all used for.
Okay, thank you.
I think they're used as golf carts sometimes.
Boy, they're going to be rough on the fairways. And I have a follow-up too about the total value of general service equipment.
Good evening, Mr. Chesley. Did you hear the question by chance?
Yes, I did. We had a little bit of a difficulty here, abuting ourselves. I apologize. Yes, the sidewalk tractor, some of the sidewalk tractors are used in all leaf collection. The specific two that we're looking at, this year's capital plan, which are called skid steers. Those are smaller sidewalk tractors. We use them for some other incidental work throughout the year, but principally the skid steer sidewalk tractors are deployed in the more urban sections of the city. They're smaller, they're more nimble, so they can handle those neighborhoods. Some are larger units, are more multi-purpose and have a higher level of productivity. They're larger and they can move faster.
Okay, thank you. And my follow-up for whomever. Without a lot of work, do we know what the total value is of our general services equipment is?
I don't have that committed to memory, Counsel, though I suspect with Mr. LeBrun, we could determine that based upon our insurance levels.
Okay, thank you. Not, it's not, it's not important. I'm just trying to get an idea of the percentage of replacement cost based on the total value, so.
I understand, but.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Counsel Keach?
Thank you. For the manager, if I look at the out years of equipment, estimate that, do you somehow take a good guess at inflation and increased prices? Is that figured into how you project that?
Yeah, it is. Looking at also the, some of the bigger pieces that might be coming up. When you get to a grader or something like that, you're going to see a spike in the increase. Generally, this is what the plan is. We don't always hit these numbers, we don't always have the revenues for this. So I have to go back to General Services and say, we can't, you know... to general services and say, we can't, you know, we can't do one point four nine million in two thousand and twenty-six. We only have one point three million. See what you can do to make that work. What they also do is, this is based on, you know, the the expected life cycle cost of each piece of equipment. With our fleet, with our fleet maintenance crews and and their skill set, generally, they can make a piece of equipment last longer and stay in better condition than what that life cycle cost estimate is originally going to be. But you got to do some, this is related to the planning. So every year, when they come to us, they will come to us and say, you know, we told you we're going to need this piece, these three pieces of equipment this year. We can put them off a year, but this one that we thought was going to last two years, we're going to have to move that up. So we're always constantly maneuvering that back and forth. And just because it says, you know, we got to replace this piece of equipment in two thousand and twenty-five, doesn't mean we do it unless it absolutely has to be done. And we look at it from a standpoint of reliability. And when it comes time for something to do like an engine replacement or something like, is it really worth putting that amount of dollars into a piece of equipment when you're only got, when the rest of it's going to rust out or or deteriorate a couple of years later? So they, we've got some really good professional people who give good advice to keep, try to keep those numbers down.
Great, thanks. And I asked that question not specific to this line item, but just in general. And my personal worries about inflation and how that's going to affect, you know, the entire budget going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing then, then we'll just move on. Mr. Walsh, I believe we're moving on to IT.
Yes, your honor, it's on page two nineteen. I believe there are four projects in the category. The first one is CIP two, which is the hardware and software program replacement for the IT department. Three hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven dollars next year. It's a mixture of general fund, water and sewer money. The targets for fiscal twenty-two are as follows: one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, sixteen police department mobile computers. Those are actually in the vehicles. They have about a four-year lifecycle, just so you know. Eighty thousand dollars to replace wireless access points throughout the organization. Those last for about seven years. We need to upgrade them for security reasons. We're also be upgrading legacy network switches throughout the organization, which also lasts about seven years. Fifty-one thousand dollars for computers. Those include prom books for the library, which last four to five years. And then about forty other computers throughout the organization, all-in-one computers, which are monitor, hardware and hard drive all in one. And then twenty thousand dollars for miscellaneous printers and monitors throughout the organization. CIP two ninety-seven is our geographic information system, our GIS, our computer mapping. Ten thousand, five hundred dollars, three-way split between the water fund, sewer fund and general fund. These are capital transfers. We use the money to hire interns primarily to update our various data data layers every summer to make sure they're accurate. CIP four seven seven is library equipment replacements on page two twenty, thirty thousand dollars to replace the gate, front gate at the library. And then CIP six thirty-one, which is multifunction photocopy machines. This replaced an old project known as one three zero. It's on page two twenty. We have about twenty-four big copiers and printers throughout the organization. They're replaced every five to seven years. We actually own them. Thirty-nine thousand dollars of general fund capital transfer dollars, which are, which is cash. They're going to be replacing the major printing photocopiers on the second and third floor of City Hall, which support city administration, legal, the community development department, finance and human resources, as well as the unit that's over at the prosecutor's office at Horseshoe Pond. And that is the category, your honor.
Okay, and who has questions? Okay, seeing then, I think we move on to intersections.
That's correct, your honor. That is on page two twenty-one. There's one project next year. It's CIP two eighty-three, which is traffic signals and traffic operation improvements. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars all in. Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars replaced signal at, traffic signal at State and Pleasant intersection. It's one of the oldest signals that we have in the city. And then forty-five thousand dollars to retrofit the audible walk signals on traffic signals in the downtown area, primarily at stores in Pleasant and Green and South. And the new signal at State and Pleasant will also have that feature. And that's the category.
Who has questions?
I do, your honor.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you. The the audible crosswalk installations at Pleasant, State and Green Street. Is that in this year's budget?
It's in the fiscal twenty-two budget, your honor. I'm sorry, Counselor Kennison, yes.
Yeah, twenty, okay, because that's true. A great need at that intersection. It's very dangerous and.
Yep, and and the new ones will be just like what we have at the intersection of basically Main and Pleasant or in Center, those new ones that were put in as part of the Main Street project a few years ago.
Well, I'm glad we're getting on top of this. It's been quite a problem for one of my constituents who was blind to get through that crazy intersection. So, great.
So how much are these to do these, to retrofit these?
Um, the three intersections are about forty-five thousand all in, so you end up fifteen thousand dollars apiece, something like that.
Okay. There was a concern at oh, gosh, State and Center. If you are visually impaired, the the cross, the crosswalks are actually angled. So if you were trying to cross and you you end up in the middle of the street, I wondered if they, if I don't know, I I guess going forward, Mr. Manager, could you, could you just have somebody look at that? It's happened several times to a gentleman I know who is blind. And it's that particular intersection, just because of the the way that intersection's set up. And the gentleman had talked to me about making it audible, so it would help to know when exactly you can, because and it gives you, when it tends to be audible, it tends to give you the full, whatever, twenty seconds or thirty seconds and such. Because it it just, it really doesn't line up. But anyway, that's that's, I've exhausted my own knowledge and it's only fifteen, if it's only fifteen thousand dollars and it solves a problem, maybe something worth looking at.
We could, we could, we could find that. It is so, I'm sorry, what street is it on?
This is State, North State.
North State, okay.
And so if you're, if you're either going north or south, that you're on an angle. It's just, the gentleman just tells me he doesn't do well in the middle of traffic, and that's where he ends up.
Okay, we'll take a look.
Okay. Anybody have a question intersections, seeing then, other vehicles?
Their vehicles, your honor, page two twenty-two, it's one project. CIP five seventy-five, which is police vehicles and equipment. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace four cruisers. Generally, our cruisers are on frontline vehicles for three years, and they live in the unmarked fleet for another two to three years, and then they are sold at auction. As the council's been made aware of in the past, we've been transitioning more to SUVs because the large automakers really aren't making sedans anymore. So typically lately, we've been buying Ford Explorers. That is the category, your honor.
Anyone vehicles? Okay, then it takes us to parking.
Parking, your honor, I had a quick question.
I apologize, Counsel Kennedy.
That's okay. No, it's my fault. I got my hand up late. Just a question on the the Ford Explorers. Are those four-wheel drive? Yes, thank you.
Parking, so three projects, your honor, for a little more than fifty-six thousand dollars in next year. First one is CIP four oh three, parking vehicles and equipment replacement. Ten thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. We are going to be purchasing a line laser for the downtown services team of the general services department. So they can do pavement markings for our lots, garages and neighborhoods surrounding the downtown area. In-house, normally that's been contracted out. This will be a good savings for the parking division and allow us to get more utility out of the downtown services team. You'll see PCR is in the operating budget about that when we get there. The next project is CIP five nine five. It's on two twenty-three of the budget. This is related to parking meters. So some quick trivia, we have eighty-six kiosks, four hundred and thirty-five smart meters and one hundred and seventy mechanical meters, which manage one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine metered spaces throughout the downtown area. Thirty thousand dollars in bonds next year, parking bonds to replace modems in our sixty-nine of our kiosk units. These are the oldest units we have that go back to two thousand and ten. The modems are being replaced because they run on two G and three G, which is being phased out due to the introduction of five G by wireless carriers. The good news is we'll be able to have more selection in who our wireless vendor is for communicating, which is, which is nice. We also have ten thousand dollars in capital transfer to reprogram meters and kiosks, as well as update signage and decals next year. That money would be used in the event the city council decides to go forward with a meter rate increase, which is tentatively carried in the pro forma per the two thousand and seventeen strategic plan. We're not asking you to make a decision on that rate increase tonight, but that's what the dollars would be used for, because we need to implement it before July first or to be ready for July first of next year. The last project is CIP six one six, which is parking division technology, page two twenty-three, six thousand dollars to replace the five printers, handheld printers that are parking enforcement officers use to enforce parking throughout downtown issue, the city actually, and issue citations. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counsel Pierce.
As we talk about parking increases, any update on collections for unpaid fines on where we are on that?
So I've asked the police department to pull that together, so we can talk about it on June third with with you all when we talk about the parking budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Okay, parks and open space.
Page two twenty-four, your honor, there's a half a dozen projects. The first one is CIP fifty-one White Park. Three hundred thousand dollars of general fund bond. Two hundred and ten thousand of that will be used to dredge the other half of the pond at the Merrimack Lodge. Half of it was done years ago. The other half was being overtaken by invasive species and vegetation. It needs to be removed and redone so we can get better ice quality during the winter. And then ninety thousand dollars for masonry repairs to the historic trolley stop at the corner of Washington Street and Center Street. CIP fifty-five is Rolf Park, ninety thousand dollars in general fund bonds. We're going to create four pickleball courts at the former basketball and tennis courts and upgrade lighting to LED. CIP fifty-six is Rollins Park, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of general fund bonds. Full reconstruction of the basketball and tennis courts. This includes the playing surfaces, fencing, backstops on basketball courts, so on and so forth. CIP five two eight, which is Pocket Parks, on page two twenty-six, sixty-five thousand dollars in general fund bonds. We are going to remove the large concrete slope slab. That's at the William Thompson Play Lot. That's at the corner of Short and North Spring Street. The area will be loomed and seeded, seeded to get better utility out of the park. CIP five five seven Memorial Field, it's on page two twenty-six, eighty thousand dollars in donations. These are asterisked funds, so these are not going to be appropriate as part of your resolution you'll vote on later this month. Lighting improvements at the football stadium. It's asterisked, and we're anticipating that the donations would come from Concord School District as they are the primary user of the facility. CIP five sixty-seven, which is Pennacook Riverfront Parks, it's on page two twenty-six, one hundred and ten thousand dollars of recreational impact fees from that district and the community. To design and permit a new riverfront park at eleven Canal Street. This is at the former Allied Leather Tannery and Amazon sites, now next to Pennacook Landing. It's about a two-acre site. It's the final piece of the Allied Leather Tannery redevelopment project, which began nearly twenty years ago and has been a goal of the community since the two thousand and four Allied Leather Pennacook Mill Shiretts, done in two thousand and four. Construction will be carried in fiscal twenty-three. It also includes reconstruction and expansion of the Canal Street Municipal Lot from about twenty-eight sixty spaces. And that is the category, your honor.
Thank you. Who has questions on parks and open spaces? I just have one question. So when we did the masonry work at, on the wall at Rollins Park, it seemed to take forever. Is there a particular reason it takes so long, or is this, is the the trolley at White going to take as long as, or is this?
My recollection, your honor, is that the Rollins Park wall was done in multiple phases over multiple fiscal years. That's part of it. We are also no longer working with the contractor that did that project, so we're, I'm I'm pretty confident that we'll get that, the trolley stop done much faster than the wall down at Rollins Park.
Mr. Manager.
We purposely phased that. That was done over three years. We purposely phased that so we could afford to do it. We couldn't afford the entire price to fit into the budget and keep the tax rate down, so that's why it was phased over three years. And the that's what the contractor could absorb in terms of getting the amount of work done, so that's why it took that long.
Counsel Fessy.
Thank you. I'm not sure who to direct this to, but is the, I think it's a wrought iron fence that's right around there. Is that part of this as well, or is that going to be at some other point?
There is, it's not part of this, but there is a project in the out years of CIP fifty-one, counselor, that does deal with fence, the wrought iron fence that surrounds basically the whole park, or at least on three sides of it. So that is, that's in our, on the horizon, but not part of this particular piece of work.
I'm sure there's a very logical explanation. Just curious, why did you choose Rolf Park to do the pickleball courts? It seems like the most active pickleball area is the Beaver Meadow Courts.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Gill on that. That was a recommendation from his department.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Councilor. The location that Rolf Park was selected because the existing base is already there. We removed two tennis courts five or six years ago, but we did keep the base there for future use. It already has an existing light system, so we can just convert the existing lights to LED. So it was the best use of the money to to have it located at Rolf Park. We will continue to keep the six multi-use courts at Beaver Meadow. They're all going to get used a lot.
The demands there, got it. Anyone else? Mr. Manager.
Just two items overall. When the, if you do approve the dollars, this is just, this is kind of like I told you so. If you do approve the dollars to do the pond, the material that gets pulled out of there, because it's an invasive species, has to be stored on site. It's going to have an odor. It's going to have an odor all summer. And everybody's going to call you and say, there's an odor here, and we're going to say, call Counselor Champlin. So.
You knew you were going to say that, Mr. City Manager.
Wait, wait, wait. It's a Ward four issue.
So call the mayor.
Yeah, whoever gets elected to Ward four. And so, but that's that's just the reality, but that's required by the state. The second part of this is, you notice there's an item in there for the 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 lights at Memorial Field. The the way that appears in the budget right now is the way the council determined it, wanted it to appear in the budget there. The Concord School District has said that they would be glad to participate in either the repair or the replacement of those lights. The repair number that we got was about eighty thousand. The replacement number, I I believe was a few hundred thousand dollars. If you were going to go do it from scratch, you would put LED lighting in there and you would rebuild the whole thing. So the this Concord School District has asked me to relate to you that they would be willing to participate fifty-fifty with the replacement of those lights or the repair of those lights. But the just to remind the council, and this is maybe not all the councils here at the time, the council has said they would like the Concord School District or others to pay one hundred percent of those costs. So I just want to remind everybody of that, that that's where we are with that.
Counsel Chipp.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. I was wondering if Mr. Gill or the city manager can illuminate me. Whom is the William Thompson, who the William Thompson Play Lot is named after? Does any, do we know?
That is, that is a great, yes, it's a great question. We're doing the research now. It was back in the early nineteen sixties. It was an African-American baseball player playing the Sunset Club. So we're all gathering that right now, and hopefully we'll have the whole history in the next probably month or so. Fascinating story.
The thought was we could do a dedication at the time, so.
Yeah, I I think Mr. Gill and I talked about this a couple of years ago. I thought this was the the Play Lot, and I thought this was the William Thompson. Yeah, I, I think Mr. Gill and I talked about this, uh, a couple of years ago. I thought this was the, the play line and I thought this was the William Thompson, so. Uh, that would be great. I, I, I would just make a suggestion. I know that, you know, I don't want to drag this on, but it would be great at some point if in the, on the website as well, where we have Rollins Park, White Park, you know, the William Thompson Play Lot. It'd be great if we could add a little sentence or two about who it's named after, you know, Governor Rollins, you know, Armenia, uh, White, uh, and so on and so forth, just to capture and pass on to, to people that little bit of history. And it wouldn't cost us anything, anything to put it on the website.
No, we started that process. I spent many days down in the Concord Room, um, this past winter, going through all the history and stuff. So we are, I am gathering all in the fast, I mean, I've been with the city twenty-something years and I did not realize the history and, uh, of, you know, people a hundred, a hundred and ten years ago. It's fascinating. So we'll, we're getting, we're getting that all together now.
Great. Thanks, thanks very much, and thanks for allowing me that little bit of time.
Uh, Councilor Fency.
Thank you. Uh, just a question follow-up on the manager's comments regarding the school district. Do we know whether they've budgeted any money, uh, for their upcoming fiscal year, uh, related to the repairs or the replacement of the lights at Memorial Field?
Uh, they, they've said to me that they would have some reserve dollars available, um, but there, I don't believe there's any money budgeted in the budget that they just passed.
Councilor.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Criveter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Walsh, should I hear you correctly when you said that the school district is the primary user of the field at Memorial Field? And then there were more than half?
Mr. Gill might be able to answer that the best, I think.
Yeah, thanks.
He's done, uh.
I, I'm just reiterating what you guys said and I, Mr. Gill hadn't really typed in on that, but who's the primary user? Are there other users? What it, what is the divide of time on that?
The, the main user, I mean, I think if you go back to the nineteen sixties, Memorial Field, that field was built as a football field. Um, a football field is the smallest rectangular field you can get. So right now, um, the football field, which is the main grandstand, it's Concord High School for the football program for graduation, and we do have, uh, Concord Capitals football in the, um, fall uses it for games on Sundays. The, the main user, um, right now is the Concord School District, just because of the size limitations of the field.
A follow-up question, your honor. Do the Concord Capitals use the lighting or are they day games?
Um, they, they're day games unless they make the tournament at the end of the season and then they need lights and then they use the lights. But most of their season is, is during the day.
Councilor Fency.
Uh, question for Mr. Gill. Does Bishop Brady use the, uh, football field and do they use the lights?
Perfect. I forgot about Bishop Brady. Bishop Brady does, um, use the field and they do pay for the lights when the lights are on. Thank you for that.
Uh, Councilor Keach.
Thank you. Mr. Gill, what is, uh, the typical fee for a, whatever, four-hour block at night with, with the lights on?
Um, it's in the three to four hundred dollar range. I can get you an exact number, um, but it's, it's in that range for the field and as well as the lights combined.
Yeah, I was just looking for a range, but that, that's, that's good. Thank you.
So Mr. Gill, if I look at the park overall between baseball field, lacrosse field, soccer fields, uh, softball fields, football field, you try to name them all there, um, tennis courts, et cetera. I- i- is it true that, that, that Concord High School would be the primary user, probably to the tune of about eighty percent of the time based on all the users?
Um, probably about that. I think over the past two years, um, through your guys' suggestions, we have used baseball field is now used almost six months out of the year. There was seventy rated games a year on that. Concord High School's probably only twenty of those. But the, if you look at the entire parcel, um, Concord High School is the main user of the complex. It is their athletic facility for phys ed as well as all their games. The community does use it a lot for tennis, the, the walking track, running track.
Thanks. Uh, any other questions? Um, I had, I'm sorry, uh, Councilor Fency.
Thank you. Uh, just had a question for, uh, Mr. Gill. Uh, I know there's a number of different fields back there. Um, there's a Little League field back there. I know there's a number of lacrosse fields back there. Are there other organizations besides the school district that use those fields?
Uh, yes, um, Concord Crush Lacrosse uses the lacrosse fields. Um, that's a spring sport. Uh, the two lacrosse fields also become soccer in the fall. We do have mostly high school, but we do rent the fields to, I see Coast United for their large soccer tournaments. Um, adult softball groups use softball A and softball B. Um, the, the baseball field is Concord High School in the spring, but then it's Sunset League. It's Concord Cannons are using a lot. We also have the semi-professional baseball league coming back in here this summer. Um, we host three or four tur-, uh, baseball tournaments there. And then, and the, I'm just going through my head, it's in the fall is the Concord Capitals Football League. Um, is the main user in the weekends. I think that's it, top of my head.
And per our, and per our agreement with the school district, they always get first, uh, first dibs, is that correct?
That is correct. As we get there, we get first dibs on their school gyms too, so.
Um, I have two other questions and, and Mr. Manager, if you could help me with this. So, um, just as I never imagined when I started this, that pickleball would take off like it, it didn't be as popular as it is today. Um, there are two other activities which, uh, seem to be either sustaining or growing in activity, and I wondered if it might be possible, uh, before we finalize our budget this year, if you could bring us a number for two different, uh, items. One is, what would it actually take to, um, replace equipment, to add equipment, um, to change locations if necessary to, to, uh, the safest environment we could find for a skate park? Um, I mean, that was, uh, help me with this name, was it, was Tom? Who's the gentleman, who's Assistant Director of General Services, Tom?
Patrick?
Yeah, I mean, I remember when he, he was the one who kind of put this all together at the skate park, so it's been a few years. Um, but I, I'd be curious to get a number to what are we actually talking about financially, uh, if we were to do something in the skate park? That's number one. The second is, um, the other, I, the other activity which seems to be just absolutely exploding in terms of use and popularity, and that's, uh, uh, frisbee golf or disc golf, I should say. Um, could we get a number on, uh, what, what it might be to to do something along those lines in our city? Uh, it seems like Nashwood now has a couple courses, Manchester has a couple courses. There's a bunch of private courses going to be popping up. Um, but I, there's this, I see a growing demand coming in Concord. Um, I saw a Facebook page that had seventy-five Concord residents on it. They were in overnight, so. Um, if you could get a number on those things, I would, yeah.
Certainly. I think, um, I think we have a number on the skate park. Um.
Did I miss it? I, I looked for it.
I think it's in, uh, Kiwanis Park, if I remember correct.
Okay.
C I P sixty.
Yes, I'm going, I'm, I'm going there right now. If you give me one second, one fifty-nine sixty. Um, we had a small number there, uh, and of course, it's, it's relative, this is a small, um, construction of a new skateboard park with the associated lighting because you want that to go along with it. And, um, a, a grant share, so we'd need about four hundred thousand dollars if you wanted to do it, um, right at that location. Now, if you wanted to find another location, if it was city-owned, then of course there'd be no cost. Yeah, um, but if you wanted, if we were going to buy a location, um, you'd have the, obviously the dollars associated with, um, buying that property too. So I think it's, I think, you know, if you were to keep it on that relative side, it'd be about four hundred thousand dollars.
That's the, what, twenty-twenty-six, sorry, I just didn't find it and thank you, appreciate that. Okay, any other questions regarding Parks and Public Space before we move on? Okay, uh, public buildings.
Public buildings, your honor, page two twenty-six, five projects. First one's number sixty-three, which is actually recreational projects. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, uh, general fund bond. It's going to be all focused at the Green Street Community Center next year. We're going to be, uh, spending a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to replace the roof, which was done in nineteen ninety-seven. Seventy dollars, seventy thousand dollars for window replacement and twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, LED lighting improvements. C I P sixty-five is City Hall renovations, uh, just a little more than seven hundred and seven thousand dollars of general fund bonds and closeout funds. A little more than four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for phase one of masonry improvements to the building. It's the first phase of three. Uh, to repoint, uh, basically the city hall and, and the auditorium. Two hundred thousand dollars to replace exterior piping for our chilled water system, which is part of our H V A C system. That's a phase one of three project. Um, and a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, door badging, um, and security at City Hall. Next project, the C I P three-two-three, which is a, uh, combined operations and maintenance facility, commonly known as the COF, where General Services lives. Page two twenty-seven, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of general fund water and sewer bonds to replace the tanks for the fuel farm, uh, which is our, our gas station at the COF. C I P four-four-three, which is the citywide community center, page two twenty-seven. Eighty thousand dollars of general fund bond, uh, to provide irrigation on the rear side of the building, uh, which abuts the park in order to get grass to grow there, so it's actually has some utility and we can use it. It's been a struggle ever since the project was built a few years ago. And then C I P five-five-one, which is library maintenance, page two twenty-eight, hundred and sixty thousand dollars of general fund bonds, hundred thousand dollars to seal the granite exterior at the, um, Green, Green Street Main Library. It has to be done periodically. It'll be so many years, and then sixty thousand dollars of carpet improvements, uh, primarily focused on the children's wing. And that is the category.
Okay, any questions? Uh, Councilor Keach.
Thank you, your honor. So the, uh, item related to, uh, employee badging. Would that suggest, uh, increased security to City Hall so the public would be eliminated from getting in to areas before they're allowed in?
That, that's one of the things we're looking at, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Walsh.
Public safety's category, your honor, is public safety, which is on page two twenty-eight. Um, starts at the bottom. The first one is Opticom Replacement Project two-three-zero. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars in, in highway reserve funds to do this. Opticom units are, um, the gizmo that allow the police and fire departments to control an intersection when they need to go through on an emergency response call. Um, so it's a routine item. C I P three-three-five is thermal imaging cameras, um, on page two twenty-nine, thirty-five thousand dollars in bonds, general fund bonds. Um, it's going to replace three full-function cameras, um, that we carry on apparatus. Um, these cameras help us see where fire is located, but also where people and animals are located for, for rescue purposes. Uh, we'll also be adding twenty smaller thermal imaging cameras, uh, that are going to be actually attached to, um, personal protective equipment that firefighters use when they go inside of a building to help them respond to a fire more safely and efficiently. Uh, C I P three-sixty-eight is Police Department Communications Equipment. It's on page two twenty-nine. Hundred thousand dollars of general fund bonds. This is the part two of a two-phase project to replace all the handheld mobile radios that the Police Department uses uh, for their sworn officers. It's about fifty radios all, all in. C I P five-sixty-one is Fire Alarm Infrastructure Replacement. It's on page two thirty, ninety-five thousand dollars of general fund bonds. Seventy-five thousand of that will be for, uh, the continued replacement of infrastructure as we migrate to a radio master box system, uh, which will eventually replace the hardwired system. But in the meantime, we're all, we're also carrying twenty thousand dollars to help us replace, uh, the wire that makes up the hardwired system because it's going to be many years before we get completely the radio box. C I P five-seventy-three is Fire Department Personal Protective Equipment, thirty thousand dollars. It's the routine, routine replacement of our turnout gear for firefighters. And that will replace about ten full sets of gear, uh, for them. And then C I P, uh, the final C I P is, I believe, six-thirty, if I'm not mistaken, yes. Uh, which is, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars of, um, general fund bonds to replace hardware and software at the Police Department that's used to, to investigate computer-based crimes. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Who has questions? No questions, that's all. All right, well, you got to come up with a question because uh, Chief Thomas is missing his kid's, uh, baseball game for this and, um, we got to make it worth his while so that we ask some questions. So it feels like it was, you know, he had to be here for a reason. Okay, well, next year hopefully he goes to his kid's game. How's that? Um, I have him twenty sewer collection.
Sewer collection, your honor, page two thirty-one, uh, three projects. The first one is number ninety-one, which is sewer main, uh, rehabilitation and, and construction. Uh, it's on page two thirty-one. The city, uh, by way of background, has about a hundred and forty-one miles of sanitary sewer line that we, we maintain. Forty thousand dollars of capital transfer from the sewer fund, uh, for phase two of two to go out and maintain about one thousand eight hundred and fifty feet of sewer interceptor access road located between Langley Parkway and Memorial Field. Um, so we can get in there and do repairs when we need to or respond to an emergency. C I P two-seventy-five sewer pump station improvements. Uh, we have, uh, eight sewer pump stations throughout the city. Seventy-five thousand dollars next year from the Mountain Green Reserve Fund to design, uh, additional improvements to the Mountain Green Pump Station for renovation. And then C I P four-ten sewer video inspection equipment, eighty thousand dollars of sewer bonds, uh, to replace camera equipment that's used to inspect the main lines as well as service lines as part of those hundred and forty-one miles of pipe that we maintain. And that is the category.
Questions, sewer question. Okay, we're along to sewer treatment.
Sewer treatment, your honor, two projects. It starts on page two thirty-two. The first one is the Hall Street Waste Water Treatment Plant, which is C I P one oh four. Um, this, the plant went into service in nineteen eighty-one and it handles about four and a half million gallons a day of waste and it has a capacity for about ten million gallons per day. Uh, next year, we're proposing two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars of sewer bonds and closeout funds of, from old sewer projects. About a hundred and sixty thousand, I'm sorry, one point six million of that will be spent on motor control center electrical improvements, um, that basically help run the plant. Uh, four hundred and two thousand and change for H V A C improvements at the plant. Hundred thousand dollars to conduct a, an equipment needs assessment and develop a capital improvement program for equipment at the plant. Twenty-five thousand dollars for security fence repairs. Twenty-five thousand dollars for SCADA improvements. SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Software. It's basically the software that helps us run the plant. And then fifteen thousand dollars for sewer pump station improvements. C I P four-sixty-six is the Pennacook Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um, it's on page two thirty-two. That, that plant went into service in nineteen seventy-four. It had some major upgrades though in two thousand and five. It averages about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, but has a capacity for about one point three million gallons. And thirty percent of our flow comes from the town of Bosquen, uh, per sewer agreement. A hundred and forty thousand dollars is proposed for the plant next year, all sewer bonds. Fifty thousand dollars to develop an equipment, uh, needs assessment and capital improvement program for the equipment at the Pennacook Plant. Twenty-five thousand dollars for SCADA improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars for pump improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars for emergency generator improvements, and then fifteen thousand dollars for asbestos mitigation at the plant. And that is the category.
Questions? Uh, Councilor Pierce.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Walsh, uh, I don't know if you can answer this, but, um, the SCADA system, is that part of the city's I T, uh, configuration where we can protect against hackers? Uh, and people getting in and opening and closing valves and, and the like?
I would have to defer to Mr. Drouse and, uh, maybe General Services to answer that.
Not finding Mr. Drouse still on the line here. But I could bring in, um, Chip Chesley.
Do we have someone from I T?
So Chesley, did you hear the question? Is there something you could answer?
Yes, uh, I'm not from I T, but I can speak to the question. The SCADA systems are basically, uh, and purposely an independent system in our neck and are not connected to the city's, uh, overall computer system. They're standalone systems.
Uh, uh, follow-up, who, who? And how do you access them? Through an app?
You, uh, it's, I wouldn't call it an app per se, but, uh, certain people are permitted to access them remotely and, uh, that's controlled by us.
So I, I think probably the best way to think about it, counselor, is, um, think of an iPad, which allows you, um, to control and monitor all the systems in the plants from afar. This is for both plants. And so in the past, when we had three shifts of folks always on site, um, you didn't necessarily need that. Now, when we don't, and we actually only have one shift of people and, which is, which is why the amount of staffing has gone down dramatically over the, over the last several years. Um, it's monitored through the system and the system alerts us to any problems. So if somebody was to hack into something or, or a system was to break, it would, it would notify us immediately and we could, uh, as a matter of fact, make changes before we actually get to the plant. We obviously would respond to the plant, but you could actually make changes in the system's operations with the SCADA equipment.
Okay.
Councilor Gish.
Thank you. Uh, this is for Mr. LeBron, I think, I hope, and I hope this isn't redundant. But if, uh, these federal funds that have been promised, uh, come down, uh, to the city level and we get some funding for some of this infrastructure improvement, would this go back to the, would the budget amount go back to the general fund? Is that where they end up?
So I, there's a couple of different groups of funding that would be coming through. Um, some of it would likely come back, uh, to the general fund based on the overall council decision. And then if there are some infrastructure improvement dollars that would come through, then we would be able to, uh, allocate those dollars to, uh, whatever the type of infrastructure improvement would be. If it's something that would typically be paid from the general fund, we would pay for that, uh, through the general capital program. If it's one of the other enterprise funds, we would pay for it there, but we'd be able to allocate that funding accordingly.
Great, thank you.
You, anyone else?
I'm gonna be off mic.
You're still on, Mr. Justin. That takes us to, uh, sidewalks and streetcaves.
Yes, your honor, on page two-thirty-two to two-thirty-three, there's one project. It is five forty-three, which is the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. Uh, one point three-three million dollars, um, combination of, of federal grant and city bonds. This is an asterisked project, the only other one in the budget this year, so none of these dollars would be appropriate as part of your resolution later this month. Um, essentially what this project does is codifies the TAP grant that the city applied for, um, a couple of months ago, um, that we're gonna hear about hopefully in December or January to see if we're successful. And it involves, um, portions of property that you will be having a public hearing on, on June fourteenth, uh, regarding acquisition of property from Pan Am Systems. Um, so that's what that project is. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Okay. I don't believe there are any projects in solid waste, no project in stormwater, and do not believe there are any projects in our street quarter improvements. So unless anybody has any questions, I think we can jump down to street rehab.
Street rehab, your honor, that's, uh, on page two-thirty-five. It is CIP seventy-eight, which is our annual highway program. Um, in the budget detail, um, on page three-hundred and three-oh-one, uh, there are maps that explain exactly what segments of road we're gonna be doing. Um, next year, we're proposing a total expenditure of two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is up from a little bit over two point two-one million in fiscal twenty-one. Um, in accordance with this, uh, the council's goals, we've been, uh, um, expanding our investment in paving for the last several years. Um, I would note that back in two thousand and seventeen, our expenditure was just under one point five million dollars. So you're up considerably over the last five years. We have two hundred and twenty miles of roadway and a hundred and seven miles of sidewalk. Um, the expenditure of next year will be focused as follows. A hundred thousand dollars for drainage repairs, fifty thousand dollars for pavement preservation, uh, citywide, which is really crack ceiling, twenty-five thousand dollars for emergency overlays, two point two million dollars for overlays and reclamation. Um, coal plane overlays are gonna be as follows. And coal planning is when they go in, they skim off the top layer of pavement, looks like corduroy, and then they pave over it. Um, these projects will be Capital Street, the full length of it, Center Street from Main Street to Union, Green Street, the full length, North State Street from Pleasant to Center, one of the reasons why we're doing the traffic signal, Park Street in full length, Pleasant Street from Main to Green, School Street from Main to Spring, Warren from Main to Spring. And then we have reclaiming the following streets, which is when we go in with, uh, I'll call it a giant rototiller. We rip up all the pavement in the base, we grade it out, recompact it, and we pave over it. Uh, we're gonna be doing Blanchard Street, which is up by the UNH School of Law, and then, uh, several streets in Fosterville, including Curtis Avenue, Foster Street, Granite Ave, and Prospect Street, and then South State Street from Pleasant to Clinton, and then South State, uh, South, uh, I'm sorry, South, um, excuse me, South Street from Pleasant to Clinton, and then South State in its full length, excuse me. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilor Kretovic?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, Mr. Walsh, uh, and this is probably for, uh, Mr. Chesley, as well as, uh, Mr. Major, if they're available. Um, with regards to the street paving program, and I alluded to this the other day, there is some construction on Carter Hill Road for reconstruction of housing. Uh, there's a subdivision going in, and there's quite a bit of damage on that road. And residents in the area, area are basically saying that the number of trucks and the weight of those trucks, um, the construction vehicles on that road have done damage to that road. The question that I have is, how does the city capture funds based on, on a subdivision like that in order to repair the road? Not right now, because there is still construction going on, but when that construction settles, um, how exactly are we reaping the benefits back to the residents that live in that area that right now are tolerating, uh, an intolerable road? Any takers?
Like, bring in Mr. Chesley, or?
Bring in Mr. Chesley, please.
Thank you.
I think that would be, uh, contemplated hopefully during the, uh, subdivision approval process, uh, those types of things. Uh, our involvement in general services, uh, really comes into play once the, uh, the streets are accepted and then we take over the operations of these streets at that point in time. Maybe Carl's can, he's got his hand up, maybe he can speak to it. I think he's spoken to it a little bit before, so maybe he may have more details than I.
So, Counselor, I'm glad you mentioned which subdivision it was, 'cause I know at the last meeting, I don't think that came out. So I'll have our staff look at that tomorrow morning and see what protections we have built into the approval.
I appreciate that. And I, I know that it isn't something that's gonna be take care, taken care of this year, because there is quite a bit of construction in that area. But the residents that drive that every day, they would really like to know, when, when are we going to see some improvement there? And I'm not trying to criticize the city at all, because there is a lot of paving that's happened, um, in that area with Bog Road, um, other parts leading around Pennacook Street and around, uh, the lake. And I know that we're doing things in segment because it, in segments, because it's what we can afford as a community. Um, but the road is deteriorating to the point where it is impacting people that have to travel it every day. So I do appreciate what you can provide for input for us during this budget process, knowing it won't be this year, but when is the relief coming? Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, I don't believe we have any streets new construction, so I think it takes us to water distribution.
Correct, you, oh, Counselor Mattson has her hand up.
All right, Counselor Mattson.
Thank you. Hold on. Thank you, your honor. Um, actually, I wanna build on, um, Counselor Kretovic's comment. When, uh, and I think this goes to, um, Mr. Chesley, when we see the increase in deterioration from construction, um, or heavy traffic, trucks, whatever, um, I would assume, or maybe I should ask, when you go and do your two-year surveys that you're talking about that could likely change the ranking of when such roads may be addressed?
Yes, every, every two years, we go out and, uh, rate the roads. Uh, we're scheduled to do it this year. And if there's been, let's call it excessive wear and tear, uh, may have contributed to a road's accelerated failure. Uh, there may have been, uh, a high level of groundwater that could have caused, uh, affected. Uh, they each get rated and the deck sort of gets reshuffled and then we go reprioritize our paving program.
So, thank you. So it sounds like in, in retrospect, um, with specificity to Counselor Kretovic's area or anybody else's area, if there has been construction or other damage like that, those roads that people have been questioning and asking about, they can get reranked, is what I'm really looking for people to understand. It's not, if you're told that your, that your road will not be paved for ten years, that's, that's a placeholder. It really depends on what is going on with the street and how the pavement is holding up. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. We, uh, we reassess every two years and people's positions can change within that rating. Certainly.
Thank you. I just want people to be able to know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, water distribution.
Page two-thirty-five to two-thirty-six, your honor, a couple of projects. Uh, we have about a hundred and seventy-seven miles of water main, uh, that we maintain. That's P-two-four-four, which is our water meter replacement program. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year of water fund, a capital transfer, which is cash, uh, to replace six hundred water meters throughout the city. CIP four-fifty-one, which is leak detection equipment, fifteen thousand dollars for routine replacement of the equipment we use, which are audio sensors that listen for leaks in the pipes. And that is the category.
Anyone? My question doesn't necessarily fit under this particular category, but when, when there's a, an issue with the water, uh, mains in the streets, is there an expect, and when we dig up the street, is there an expectation that the streets can be put back in a reasonable condition?
If it's something that we did, we did, we went up and dug up a street because we're replacing a line?
Uh, this was, uh, servicing business.
If we did it, yes, absolutely. If we didn't do it, then would, we, we would expect whoever did the work to be doing that.
And, and we have a person from Maggery who's doing the inspections, or who, who wouldn't does inspection?
The, um, I'm not sure directly on that, depending on what, what, on what the scenario was.
Okay.
And we haven't got any complaints like that, that I'm aware of. So we haven't, we haven't received anything like that.
I'll send you one in the morning. How's that?
Sounds great.
Um, okay, it takes us to item twenty-nine, water tube.
The last two projects of the night, your honor. Um, the, uh, page two-thirty-six to two-thirty-seven, first one is CIP one-twenty-four, uh, more SCADA, but this time it's for, uh, the water system and not the sewer system. Um, thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars for various software upgrades with SCADA, uh, for the water, uh, uh, plant. And then two, uh, CIP three-forty-seven waters, uh, storage tank repairs. We have five water tanks throughout the city that help provide enough pressure to make it work and, and supply. Fifty thousand dollars for, uh, telemetry building upgrades at the Primrose Tank in Pennacook. Um, the telemetry, uh, building is used to, um, help remotely operate and control the tower. And, uh, that's the end of the CIP, your honor.
Okay, Councilor Dennis?
Thank you. Question for Mr. Walsh, or it may actually go to somebody else. Um, the SCADA system, uh, for the, um, the water, um, plant, I'll call it, does that also hook into the various water tanks around the city as well?
Hmm, I'm gonna let Mr. Chesley respond to that one, so he can get a detailed answer.
Yes, it does. As Tom was alluding earlier, our, our, our personal call right now can boot up his laptop and tell you the, the elevation in each water tank. And, uh, should a elevation start to fall precipitously during the night, he'd be waking up.
Quick follow-up. Um, my assumption is that, uh, we have some level of security related to those water tanks as well. Is that a correct assumption?
That's a, that's a correct assumption, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Mr. Walsh, you have anything further you wanna go over?
I'm all set, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your very thorough and detailed explanation of these. Very helpful. Um, Mr. Manager, do you have anything further, um, for the finance committee?
No, your honor.
Okay. So, uh, is any member of you think about the finance committee, budget questions, anything? Okay. So the next time, uh, we will get together to discuss the budget will be on, uh, June third. We'll talk about special revenue funds, which include the, uh, project inspections, parking airport, conservation, golf arenas, so, so waste, and plus our enterprise funds being water and wastewater. So that's on for June third. Um, so at this time, um, I suppose we don't, we can adjourn from the finance committee, uh, and, uh, we're gonna take a two-minute recess and then we're gonna come back and we're gonna come back as the, uh, city council meeting. Okay?
We're, we're gonna stay on this Zoom, your honor.
We're gonna stay on this Zoom, and then later, we're going to be going into a, uh, attorney-client, uh, meeting, a non-meeting meeting, and that is a separate Zoom, which you all should have, uh, received that invitation for. But in the meantime, we're gonna take a two-minute recess and Council Finance before we go.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question. Um, you mentioned June third, we'll be back as a finance committee. Is the plan still to adopt a budget around June seventh, or, or are we considering pushing that off?
Um, I was gonna ask you all on June third, uh, it'd be my recommendation, in all honesty, uh, at this point in time, that we go ahead and have a public hearing on the seventh, but that we wait, uh, to take action, uh, till later in the month, to see what's gonna happen with the state budget. But it, that's a, that's a council decision, whatever you, the pleasure of the group wants. Uh, Mr. Gish, Councilor Gish.
Thank you. I cannot find the email for the non-public. If somebody could send that link to me, I would.
But, but you're not leaving this meeting now, that's for later on, okay?
Negative.
Okay. All right, we'll see everybody back right here. Don't go away in, uh, about two minutes. Thanks. Counselor Bouchard, you're not muted. Hey, we everybody pretty much back, I think. Okay. So. Let me see. I've already read the introduction, but why don't we? Let me ask a question. Do we need to take attendance, or is it we're just rolling in from one to another? Ms. Manager, you want to run?
I can do the attendance if you like.
I'm asking, do we need to? It's are we just rolling from one to another?
It's a it's a separate meeting. I would I think it'd be probably best to take it.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Bouchard?
Present home alone.
Mayor Boulay?
Here, office alone.
Counselor Champlin?
Present in a room in my house alone.
Counselor Fantasy?
Present, I'm in a room hopefully by myself.
Counselor Lady Sexton?
Here.
Counselor Keach?
Yes, here alone by myself in my home.
Counselor Kennison?
Home alone here.
Counselor Credit Vic?
I am I present here alone in a room for the moment.
Counselor Mattson?
I'm present at home alone.
Counselor Nayan?
Present at my office alone.
Paul Pierce?
Present in my office at home alone.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Present at home alone in this room.
Counselor Todd?
Here at home alone in this room.
Counselor Warner?
Here at home with my family.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So tonight, for the purposes of our council agenda, we have one item. That item is the issue of whether or not to extend the mask ordinance, which was extended back in January, and it was set to expire on June first. So since we are coming upon June first, I think this is a good time to decide how we'd like to move forward. I was gonna approach it this way unless anybody objects. If we, I figured we'd have a discussion, start off with that. Then following discussion, if there was a desire to continue the ordinance, then we would take a motion, have the second, and then vote on that whether or not to to move forward. If we, if there was no motion, then it would simply expire on June first. So what and and there'd be no need for affirmative action, I guess, is what I'm saying. So that that was how I anticipated moving forward. I have two people. I have Council Kennison and Council Champlin.
Thank you, your honor. In reviewing the testimony that we've had via email, one thing I noticed was those people who wanted to end the mask mandate were not from Concord or didn't identify where they were from, but all all but one of the emails from Concord were asking to keep the mask mandate and not not let it go. I just wanted to make those comments because I think the preponderance of evidence is that people want it to continue.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Champlin?
Thank you, your honor. You know, I've been going back and forth on this issue. I think that the mask ordinance was a great, was a good idea, which I voted for when we first adopted it. I have read all of the communications we've we've received, noted some of the same things that Counselor Kennison mentioned. You know, I have talked to business people in the downtown. I talked to a small business owner today. And she said that, you know, she had indicated in an in-town Concord survey that she thought that we should extend it. And now she wasn't sure because of the CDC announcement, which in many ways undercuts our local ability to maintain, I think, a mask ordinance. As you know, and as you've mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce conducted a survey of Concord only within Concord city limits, members of the chamber received two hundred responses, and the responses were almost evenly split, forty five opposed continuing the mask ordinance, and for fifty five percent were in favor of that. I thought it was important to to find out what the medical community said. So I talked today to the New Hampshire Medical Society and asked them what their position was on on this issue. They indicated to me that that when considering whether or not we were out of the woods in this pandemic, they they consider three factors. The first is the vaccination rate in an area's population, whether it's a city or whether it's a county or whether it's the state as a whole. What's the vaccination rate? And they consider that if you reach seventy percent vaccination rate, you are, you know, in a much, much, much reduced level of vulnerability. Merrimack County, according to the data they gave me, is the is the county in the best shape in New Hampshire in this regards at fifty one percent vaccination. And as we heard from the city councillor, or rather, the city manager at one of our previous meetings, Concord is is very close to reaching that with, I think, sixty four percent of our entire population having at least their first or both shots. The second factor that the medical society considers is community transmission. And they consider that if you're at a community transmission rate of fifty fifty cases, fifty new cases per a hundred thousand people in a fourteen day period, then you are in the clear. My words, not theirs, but that's that's their benchmark. Right now, Concord is at sixty new cases per hundred thousand during a fourteen day period. So we're we're approaching the safety line in that regard as a as a community, as a city. The third factor that the medical society considers is PCR positivity. And is the PCR positivity below five percent? And Concord is really over the goal line on this at one point one percent. So in discussing this with them, one of the concerns that was raised to me was this Memorial Day weekend. They are concerned that Memorial Day, a lot of people getting together, a lot of interaction. We may may see a spike and see some of these numbers go in the the wrong direction. Of course, our mask mandate or our mask ordinance continues to June first, as you've said, your honor. And one of the recommendations that was made to me was to, in fact, extend our mask ordinance for another month. Get beyond any impact that the that the Memorial Day holiday might have. Take a look at the numbers, see where we are relative to these factors, and then make a decision on whether to let it sunset. I think that's prudent advice. I looked at our dates, our next, if we were, for example, to extend our ordinance to July first, that might be problematic because our next city council meeting is the fourteenth of June, which would only give us, which is only a couple of weeks away from today. On the other hand, if, as you have mentioned, we may, in fact, meet again outside of the June fourteenth meeting to approve our city budget. And if that date in fact falls after June fifteenth, which I kind of guess it would, I think we could, in fact, look at the numbers, you know, ask for the city staff to report on what the numbers are at that point. And if it looks like we're in the clear from the medical society standpoint, then allow the ordinance to sunset on July first. If, in fact, we're not, that is not the case, we're not going to come back after the fourteenth, but rather before the fourteenth. And I might suggest extending the mask ordinance to the thirteenth, which is the next date that the city council meets in full session. Thank you, your honor. Those are those are my comments.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I got Counselor Bouchard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Champlin, for that medical information. All very important. I I go back to, been going back and forth on this issue. And I go back to our original discussion when we were first looking at a mask mandate. And that was the enforcement issue, you know, how were we going to enforce it? And as I'm in and out of businesses, I I kind of see businesses now where we put the mask mandate in place to help businesses because they felt they needed help getting their customers and needed backup and needed some teeth to get people to wear masks. And now it seems to be going a little the other way, that now customers are more, why do I have to wear a mask? I'm vaccinated and things, things are are looking up. So we're kind of sort of back where we started, but people are now vaccinated and and our numbers are getting better. And I also think Concord is in a unique situation. We are the capital city. And the state is, you know, they're now open their buildings, masks are optional. And I I am a member on a state board. We received a letter last week saying that our board meetings will now be in person. They expect the governor to roll back the mandate. And there'll be accommodations given for the public who can still kind of hybrid, it can still zoom in, so to speak, but it's it's going to be expected at all boards and commissioners meet in person and masks will be optional. And I say that because we're such a big employer for the state. So we're kind of in this, kind of in this middle. I was wondering maybe a hybrid because I believe there is a concern from from the emails I've received about the children that have not yet been back vaccinated. And I was wondering if there's any information on that of for summer camps? And should we should we maybe treat that population a little bit different in our in our like community center and summer camps? And if city manager had any comments or that on or David Gill? But I I'm I'm leaning towards rolling, letting the mandate expire and maybe with like a hybrid model, maybe for the children until maybe July first or whenever it seems safe for them. So it's my comments. Thank you.
I got Warner.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor. I I have observed that a lot of folks are self-governing, i.e. they are comply and really don't have a lot of problem complying with what merchants are asking them to do, notwithstanding what's happening in the larger world in terms of CDC guidelines and so forth. Given the preponderance and the number of requests that we've gotten from citizens in Concord to consider extending the ordinance for at least another month, I am actually reacting well to Counselor Champlin's presentation. I don't think it's a particularly significant hardship for us to extend the mask mandate for another month, particularly in terms of the comments that have been made regarding the vaccination of of children. So I would be supporting extending it for another month or so in keeping with what Counselor Champlin has presented.
Thank you. Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Thank you. I like a lot of what the previous counselors stated, particularly. It jumped out to me, too, that a lot of the contacts we had, it was Concord residents who asked to extend. So I really appreciate Counselor Kennison bringing that up. As a mother of two young children, I know that the inability for children twelve and under to get vaccinated yet is certainly a topic of conversation among our family and our friends with young children as well. And while I'm in a situation where we have other family members who can go to the store or run errands, that's not true for everyone. And coming up, as we talked about, on the Memorial Day holiday and the July fourth holiday, making sure we have a little bit more flexibility for families who who either have not had a chance to get vaccinated or have young children. And also frankly, you know, it's a matter of equity for individuals in our community who are high risk, either because they're immunocompromised or they experience a disability. And I think we have to be really thoughtful that some the CDC guidelines are really written for an individual perspective, not for a public health or looking at equity issues. And I think that jumped out to me in terms of some of the federal guidance versus what we got from the State Department of Public Health Services, which looked a little bit more community transmission and what it means for all of our community members and what policies we need to have in place. So I would support extending this. I think revisiting it in July makes sense to me. And I do want to note, you know, on the small business piece, also for workers, I I think it's really difficult because without any kind of way to know whether or not somebody's vaccinated, we have to have a lot of trust. And frankly, based off of just some of the contacts we received from those who wanted us to end the mask mandate, but then also questioned whether COVID exists at all and spoke against masks in general. Makes me very nervous about the reality of how some community members have responded to this public health pandemic. So I support extending it and I appreciate Counselor Champion's idea here.
Thank you. And Counselor Gray, second? Counselor, you're on still mute.
Excuse me. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I originally supported the ordinance because there was a cry from the retail community in Concord to for us to show some leadership and to provide them with the ability to tell customers that it was important to wear masks. I think that was a really important thing to do in terms of flattening the curve. Now I'm hearing the opposite from retail owners and workers that it is time to lift the mandate. I'm inclined to do so. I was also very moved by an email correspondence that we all received today from a well-regarded physician insurgent in our community here who also has a disabled child, who urged us all to lift the mandate and instead to engage in an effort and to encourage more people in the community to get vaccinated. I think that's a really important thing that we could do is sort of engage in a campaign to encourage those who have not yet to do so. And I also think it's important that we should also encourage any business owners who would like to keep the mandate in place to do so on their own and to provide that choice for others. So I'm inclined to allow the mandate to expire.
Thank you. Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to follow up on Counselor Grady Sexton, I agree with much of what she said. First of all, I do agree with the no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service right of a private business to do that. And I think they could. There's lots of confusion out there. I was with a local restaurant owner this afternoon and he urged me to, to drop the mask mandate so that people in the restaurant could get out and walk around. And I told him that our ordinance really has nothing to do with restaurants. And I wasn't sure what the guidelines were at the state for restaurants, but this had nothing to do with this ordinance. So I mentioned that as an example of, of how much confusion is really out there. I also get the sense that after sixteen months, hopefully, we know what are safe and unsafe conditions and how to act accordingly. I too would urge all citizens to get vaccinated. And perhaps when they leave their home, put a mask in their pocket as they would their wallet and their watch. And if someone asks you to put on your mask, please do it neighborly and in a neighborly fashion and respect what they want to do and not judge anyone. So I'm in favor of letting this ordinance sunset at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Fessy next.
Thank you. I think for the past year, a number of people have said, we have to follow the science. We have to follow the science, and that's been a big refrain. Perhaps so much to our surprise, the CDC came out with their guidance recently that said, you know, the time for masks has ended for people who have been vaccinated. And, you know, if we're going to follow the science, that's something we should be following. I have, you know, three young children, as many of you all know. None of them are at the point where they can get vaccinated yet. They've gone to school all year wearing masks. I would love for them to be able to not wear masks at this point. But until they're, until they're vaccinated, they will continue to wear masks, whether there's a mask mandate or not. But that's a choice I think I can make as a parent, and I think a number of parents will make that choice. I think we want to do what we can to encourage the people who are on the fence about whether to get vaccinated or not. And if it, if, if one of the benefits is that you, you don't have to wear a mask anymore, then, you know, I think we should move in that direction. I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we do want to encourage everybody to get vaccinated. And if you're not vaccinated, I think we need to encourage people and, you know, whether it's we pass a resolution or something else, but encourage people who are not vaccinated to continue to wear masks and allow businesses to make the choice. If you're not comfortable with people coming into your store without a mask, that's fine. We should all be more than willing to put one on, whether we have a mask, whether we are vaccinated or not. But I think we're at the point and I, I understand the instinct to try and push it off to, you know, July one or sometime after, but there's always going to be a holiday. There's always going to be a three-day weekend that could justify just pushing it off a little bit. I think the data at this point, the fact that we've got sixty-four percent of our population already that's gotten at least one shot is fantastic. We're not that far away from seventy percent, and we've got a lot of kids that aren't even eligible yet. So perhaps we're, we're maybe a week or two earlier than, than might make sense to let it drop. But from my perspective, it's better to be, you know, just a little bit too early than, than waiting too long.
Thank you. Counselor Mathis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been listening to the various counselors speak and they all have good points. I myself would be leaning towards letting the mask ordinance. And I've heard a lot from different people. And I, and I think most importantly, what I would like to say is I do encourage people to get vaccinated. And our allowing the mask ordinance to lapse does not in any way mean that people shouldn't be able to wear a mask if that makes them more comfortable. And I think Counselor Pierce said it nicely is that, you know, if we have, if we've got somebody who is asking you to wear a mask, or if you just, just put a mask in your pocket and be prepared to put it on if you need to. And if you're feeling uncomfortable with a crowd, then you have it there for yourself. And that people respect each other and from either side, whether you want somebody to be wearing a mask or not, just to be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kredovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to recognize one of the comments that Counselor Bouchard said, which is the enforcement piece. It only took the governor raising the mask mandate statewide for people in our community in some of our larger stores to walk around without masks and it was no longer being enforced. As much as I would love to say that we're going to extend this, we have no way to really enforce this any longer. For those individuals that reached out to us and want to extend the mask mandate, I would tell you this. I'm fully vaccinated, I have an autoimmune disorder, and I'm still going to wear my mask because it's what's the greatest protection for myself. There's a lot of people with some crazy ideas out there. And ultimately, it's a personal choice at this point in time. And I would also encourage my fellow counselors that if the numbers start to switch and go in the direction that is not positive for this community, that we will all get together again and we will put the mask ordinance back in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Exactly what Counselor Kredovic was just saying. You know, I served on the subcommittee with other at-large counselors as well as the mayor to look at the issue of a mask ordinance. We were, made that decision largely driven by the business community and science. Science is telling us now that it's time to look in a different direction than mandatory masks. But as Counselor Kredovic said, there's nothing stopping us from implementing this again if we see the numbers move in a different direction. And I would be one of the first ones to, to recommend that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, you had your answer.
I did, but I was going to let Counselor Bouchard go.
Okay, Counselor Bouchard, second time. Counselor Bouchard, if you could just take the mute off.
Thank you, thank you. I was gonna ask if either the city manager or David Gill could weigh in on the concerns about the children in the city summer programs and in the community center? And if there's a way for us to, because I agree, I think we need, the mask mandate needs to expire. But if there's a way to, for the children's programs that the city is going to be running to still have the mask and to hear the reasoning behind that from one of those staff.
Okay, Mr. Manager, how was it? Good timing.
That was, that was great timing. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let me read you an excerpt from a letter that I have prepared to go out tomorrow if you decide to lift the ordinance today. Well, actually, it would go out, you know, when it expires on, it would go out tomorrow, but in anticipation of the expiration on the first. This is just an excerpt from that letter. The, "To all the participants who continued with in-person programming, well done. The, this summer, while utilizing the community centers, we will be continuing with COVID-19 protocols, including the face covering requirement in all common spaces, hallways, bathrooms, et cetera. This will go out to anybody who's going to be using any of our facilities as we will be hosting numerous youth summer camps in the buildings. Also, as part of the recommendations for summer camps, we will be continuing asking health screening questions for participants and limit the number of guests entering the centers. The enhanced cleaning will also continue at all indoor recreation locations. This summer, we will also continue with our in-person and virtual senior citizen programming in our adult enrichment fitness classes." And there's several other pieces about what's going on. So we, we plan whether you lift the ordinance or don't lift the ordinance, we're going to continue with what we're doing throughout the summer for the children and for the seniors using all of our buildings and programs. In addition to that, I just, I'd ask for any guidance that you may want to provide. We, as you know, we're budgeted for July fourth. If you'd like me to continue to plan on having a July fourth celebration. Glad to answer any questions.
Maybro Tend, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Mr. Mayor, and I would definitely support the city manager's letter. And as for the question on the Fourth of July and everybody meeting at Memorial Field, I think that's one, once again, that's going to be a situation where you really can't social distance. Or maybe you can, but maybe we can require masks if you go inside the gates to sit at the field and watch the fireworks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins.
Thank you. I was just curious, city manager, the last letter I'd seen or guidance I'd seen from the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services suggested that if everyone is fully vaccinated indoors, no masks. And if you don't know, that you should continue to mask and socially distance. I was just curious whether the city had received any kind of memo from the Department of Public Health Services or if we had somebody on the call who could speak to that.
I, we could check. I have not, I believe I've received that letter. And even if I had, I would go the direction that I'm going in and not the direct, anything else that they were suggesting.
Okay. Counselor Kinsel, I'll be with you in a second. I got Counselor Nye and then Counselor Chaplin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to certainly enter the manager's question about, I certainly encourage the participation in the July fourth event. I think if the community needs it at this point, and people want to get together and celebrate our independence and in relative to the mask ordinance, I think my physicians have been pretty well-known. And I do think it's time that, that, that we allow the ordinance to end and in response to one of the comments about protecting workers at facilities. Anybody who is of an employment age has had the opportunity to be vaccinated. So I, I don't think that's a concern at this point. Others who have already spoken have been very articulate and expressed, I think, all the thoughts that I have contemplated. So thank you very much.
Counselor Chaplin.
Thank you, Your Honor. It sounds as if there is a majority forming, which is in favor of allowing the mask mandate to expire. I would just point out that the efficacy of masks is, is greatest in terms of preventing someone who is infected, who is wearing a mask, from spreading the infection. And secondarily, to protect the person who's wearing the mask from becoming infected. So any policies regarding our summer camps and things of that nature, I would hope would be based on that understanding of the science. You know, in, in Asia or decades, it's the person who's wearing a mask is the person who has a cold or the person who has a flu who has to go out in public. And it's because of a collective sense of responsibility and not infecting others, which unfortunately, we don't seem to have a lot of in, in our country right now. But I would hope that we keep that in mind in terms of the policies around our kids. Putting a mask on our kids is good, but it doesn't protect them as much as having masks on other people as well. You know, if they're going to be in proximity to unvaccinated children. Relative to the city manager asking for comments on Fourth of July, everything that I've seen has indicated that, you know, outside transmission is minimal right now with the number of people we've had vaccinated. I think it's important to remember that we get, we had a lot of people from outside of town coming to Fourth of July celebrations as well. But the statistics here in the city seem to indicate that an outdoor gathering like that probably wouldn't be bad unless we had a spike. So I would just recommend that the city manager take a look at what the indices, the factors that I outlined from the State Medical Society look like and what the factors look like from the State Department of Health and Human Services, and let that be the guidance. I'll just finally say that one of the concerns that was expressed to me by the medical society representative I spoke to was a concern about some of the mutant viruses that are arising and how quickly they can spread in an unmasked environment. That, that's kind of the unknown here and, and something I think we should be cognizant of. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Counselor Rice-Hawkins.
Thank you.
You know, I apologize. Would you mind waiting? I had promised Counselor Kennison. Is that okay? Thank you. I apologize. Counselor Kennison, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to forget you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question of the city manager. And do you have a sense of the comfort level of city hall employees around the issue of not wearing masks or not requiring masks?
We have, we have Plexiglas up, we have all the other protocols in place. We have, we're still going to do contract, contact tracing. All the other pieces are in place. And if employees want to wear masks, they will be, they could obviously wear masks. If a customer comes in and they would like an employee to wear a mask and we have an employee available who is willing to wear a mask, we'll avail them of that or we'll meet them outside and take care of their services outside.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Counselor Rice-Hawkins.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the mask ordinance to July fifteenth.
I'll second.
Second, to extend it to what date? I'm sorry.
July fifteenth.
We have motion, second. Have Counselor Finacy.
It did, but I'll defer.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if Counselor Rice-Hawkins could speak to the significance of that date.
With your permission, Your Honor? Thank you. Yeah, so our next city council meeting will be Monday, July twelfth. So the July fifteenth date would just a nice date, and it gives us a few days so we can revisit then. It gets us through the Memorial Day holiday and July fourth. It gives an opportunity to follow the guidelines from the Division of Public Health Services, which believes that we will be closer to reaching those science-based data standards that we have all discussed tonight. And it also gives an opportunity for families to plan what they're going to do for those who are not in a situation where they can go out and be exposed to individuals who are not willing to mask and also not willing to get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. First of all, I just want to say I really appreciate this discussion. This is exactly what I was hoping for. And in talking to my peers, mayors, we have a call every two weeks or so. Every community is having this exact same discussion. And in fact, I think Nashua just, I think repealed theirs, Manchester repealed theirs, and, you know, Somersworth and Rochester, everyone's going through the same discussion. So I, I think this has been extremely helpful. I, I have enjoyed getting the emails from everyone. And I can tell you that I started answering back to some of the folks who emailed and said, you know, what is your interest in Concord? And I will confess that if they weren't from Concord, I pretty much dismissed them. So I really focus my, my energies on the folks who live here in Concord. I know that many of you have done exactly what I've been doing, and that is bugging all of our friends and strangers and everyone we know asking, what do you think? What do you think? What should we do? What should we do? Because they actually tell me, oh, gosh, Chaplin just asked me the question. Keith just asked me the question. I can't believe it. Kredovic just asked me the question. So I know that we're all, we're all asking everyone we can to get the, to come out with the best result. the best result we can as well. And you know what's interesting? I have, you, I think someone might have been, Counsel Gray Sexton said earlier, you know, we went into this really trying to do the right thing by science, by really helping our business community, particularly our retailers, to protect those employees which worked in those stores back when we put this in place. And what's fascinating is, that is one of the voices in this discussion that I think has been kind of left out. Because, you know, the, when the chamber does a survey, and I'm really glad they did, I appreciated them stepping up to the plate and asking the membership, oftentimes, it's the owner of the business that will answer that question. And we don't necessarily always hear from the employees, the workers of those businesses. So that, that's what I've been focusing on, is just talking to those line workers, and so what do you want? What, what are you thinking? What are you feeling? It was interesting. I was at, I, three, three today. And one employee said to me, she said, we're going to do whatever our corporate decides, and they're still trying to figure out what they want to do. But she looked at me and she says, can you please help us? Can you please make it expire? This is killing us. You please, you know, enough is enough. So it's fascinating. One of the coffee shops, employees, they're arguing with their, with their folks who are coming in and trying to get a breakfast sandwich and a cup of coffee and such. And, you know, they've been really great at trying to work with their customers, supplying them with masks what they can, but the rhetoric, the dialogue is really becoming hostile, much more hostile than even I imagined at times. And, and these are some businesses which you all know, who are very progressive in their thoughts and their, their efforts, their own personal efforts around the community, and they're like, please, and this needs to stop. So it's really hard for me, because I personally am not, I'll tell you all, I will still wear my mask. When I go into establishment, I will choose to still wear my mask. But, you know, what I'm getting is that the establishments, they can still require folks to wear a mask, and some people will continue to do that. We have a larger store I went to, yesterday, I asked the checkout person, and I said, how many people wear masks? They said, you know what, it's about 50/50. And part of that, I think, is just simply the confusion which is going on. Who do I listen to? The state says this, the CDC says this, what does it mean in Concord? So I think we need to clear up the confusion, I think we need to move on. But as someone else has said, I think we need to be ready to respond if we see, if we see a direction going that is not favorable and people need to put the masks back on, I think we need to respond quickly to do that. So even, I'm making my personal choice, I'm going to say, I think it's time to let expire. And the other part I thought I wanted to add, I did reach out to the state to see where they were and what's going to happen. And I think we're going to have to, this is a bit of a side note, but I just want to add this, I think you're going to see the state is going to be repealing all the executive orders within a fairly short order. And, no pun intended. And, and so we're going to have to make some choices about how we want to meet. Because if the, as you know, is when, when we read the, the opening every time, we say, you know, in conjunction with Government News Emergency Order Number 12, Personal Executive Order 20, National 4. If that expires, then we're going to have to figure out how we meet it in person. And I think, you know, our committees are going to have to figure out how to meet in person. So there's going to be a lot bigger debate of how we do this and how we move forward. But I think in response to what I'm hearing from constituents, what I'm hearing from neighbors, what I'm hearing from those folks who don't always get a voice, those employees, I think it's time to let expire and be ready that if it is time, if we see something shifting, to respond quickly and put it back. And I will add one last thing. You know, the state did say, look, you're going to have June, July, August, probably September are all going to be really good months, you're not going to see a lot of things. You may see, you're probably going to see an uptick in October, November. I mean, they were pretty candid about that. But right now, it was, you know, get on board, because this is happening. So I'll stop there. And Counsel Rice-Hawkins, you have a hand?
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I just did want to put on for the record that the workers I spoke to overwhelmingly asked us to keep this in place. So definitely speaking to some different individuals, which is to be expected, right? As we saw, you know, the public and some of the businesses are divided on what to do by just for the notes, I wanted to make sure that that was reflected from those conversations as well. Thank you.
I hope, by no means that I suggested I spoke to everybody, just folks that are in it. Anybody else would like to share? We do, we do have a motion, the motion is due, Counsel Fantasy?
I just wanted to speak to that last comment you made, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important that we remain flexible, because, you know, I'm not convinced that there's not going to be another spike at some point if we don't convince people to go and get vaccinations. Once it gets cold and people are forced back inside, and if they're not vaccinated, then obviously there's the potential for future community transition. And I don't think we should ever lose sight of that. But right now, I think we're, you know, almost on that 70% number, so we are on the brink. And certainly, if we can get a vaccine approved for under 12, I think we will very easily get to that 70% number, and hopefully eliminate this as an issue in the future.
Thank you. Counsel Gray Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to ask the city manager and you, Mr. Mayor, if, if there's consensus here, and if the city would be able to engage in some sort of a public campaign on social media in terms of encouraging folks to get vaccinated, if that's something that there's a collective interest in?
I can speak for myself, and I think that is the direction to go, and for all the reasons that everyone else stated. But one of the things that was shared with me from the state is that the folks who have been vaccinated, I mean, they were early, they wanted it. In fact, some of the sites are probably going to start closing, and that we're going to go back to your traditional healthcare model, where you go to see your primary care physician to get your shots and such, because the appointments are just not being filled, there's a lot of empty slots, and there's a lot of people just kind of sitting around waiting for people to come, they're not coming. So I think anything we can do to encourage, you know, folks to get their shots, but it's, from what I understand, it's going to be back to a more traditional type of.
And from the city, city standpoint, city staff standpoint, absolutely, we'd be glad to do it. And we've already, our employees alone have already admitted over 100,000 shots to individuals.
Great. I don't want to make sure everybody gets a chance to say what they want to say, so I don't want to, we else, anybody else last? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Motion has been due seconded, so are we ready to go on the question? Okay. And the motion, just to be clear, is to extend the mask ordinance to July 15th. Okay. Mr. Manager, do you want to call the law? Or Mr. LeBron, or whoever's?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Let's see. Counsel Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Chod?
No.
Counsel Werner?
Yes.
Counsel Champlin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
No.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
No.
Counsel Keach?
No.
Counsel Kennesaw?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
No.
Counsel Mattson? Counsel Nye?
No.
Counsel Pierce?
No.
Counsel Bouchard?
No.
Mayor Boulay?
No.
The no's prevail.
10 to 4. Okay, motion fails. So if that fails, then I'm just going to make an assumption, unless, okay, well, you know what, we got hands raised. Counsel Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would make a motion to allow the mask mandate to expire, or maybe we don't need to do anything.
That's what I was just trying to get at. So I would just simply, there's no need to take any action, it just simply expires on its own.
Great, thank you.
I have, I'm going to counsel, I'm going to try to, because you got a lot of hands coming up, I'm going to do it as best I can. Mr. Manager, you went first, I think.
The fire chief just sent me a note, the fixed sites, doing first doses go through the end of May, second doses only in June, and they'll be closed on July 1st. So then you'll be back to it, Mr. Mayor, as you were saying, back to your, your primary care physician.
Okay. I'm going to go right across the road, so I apologize if it wasn't the right order, but it's the best I got. I'm going to go with Counsel Champlin first.
Thanks, Your Honor. I had considered, in the event that we decided to make, to allow the ordinance to expire, to make a motion to empower the city manager to reinstate it if cases reached what the State Department of Health and Human Services determined or have identified as a severe new, new community transmissions, which is 150 cases, per new cases for 100,000 people in a 14-day period. However, I've heard many of my colleagues express, as well as you, Your Honor, express the commitment to reconsider an ordinance should the state and the county and the city experience a significant spike in cases. So I won't do that. But thanks very much.
Management, Mr. Mayor?
So just so the council, I think the council's aware, under the charter, I have the authority to call a special meeting of the city council without, you know, without, it's either that or eight members getting together and calling a special meeting. So if it turns out there is a spike, anybody give me a call, if I don't see it, if I don't notice, anybody give me a call, and then I could get in touch with everybody, we can call a special meeting immediately, under emergency orders.
Counsel Fantasy?
My first question is, did someone turn the lights out on the city manager? Because it's getting a little dark there. My second question was, I was going to offer a resolution that we encourage all people who are not vaccinated to continue to wear masks when they're entering retail and other establishments. I don't know if there's any interest in that at this point, but that was the, the motion that I was going to offer prior to Counsel Rice-Hawkins' motion.
Counsel Boucher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. I'm, you know, definitely, like, the mask ordinance expire. My question is then, but I want to make sure that we support the city manager's letter that he plans to go out to the community tomorrow, speaking to the community center and children's sports and the senior programs. So, thank you.
I would just say, in terms of those things, I mean, if it comes to a mask, you know, putting it back in place, that's the prerogative of this body, and I'm sure we will, it will not be hard to have eight of us get together, whatever. And Mr. Manager, if you want to call a meeting, that's fine, that's your prerogative as well, but that clearly is obviously a policy, as you've recognized, it's that we decide. In terms of the letter, you have all the imperative in the world to, to write that, that's well within your purview. So, yeah, I mean, it's, I think we're all staying in our lanes, and I think we're doing well.
Thank you.
I think I had Counsel Nye next, and then I had Counsel Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Manager, could you please clarify when the end date is? I spoke to several people who were confused as to whether or not they would not require masks as of June 2nd or as of the morning of June 1st. The language was confusing to them.
Can I, can I bring my attorney in, or our attorney in for that?
So, I mean, can we just, just try to make it easy? So we said as a council, June 1st. So I would assume like midnight of, you know, June 1st, it expires. I mean, I mean, the day before, how many days is man? So Tuesday, June 1st, there will be, the mandate would expire.
The ordinance actually says through June 1st.
How about on June 2nd? Mrs. Solicitor, do you have a different opinion?
I would agree with the plain language of the ordinance. If it says through, then it's, it would be until 11:59 June 1.
Thank you, appreciate it. Counsel Pierce. Counsel Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say thank you to the city manager for his leadership and his creative thinking throughout this whole pandemic. It's not by any means over, and there'll be a lot more creative thinking to do. But I just wanted to share my appreciation for his leadership and for all the hardworking city employees, and also for the firefighters and for our police department at the vaccination site. It was just amazing to see, and the number that we just heard in terms of the shots administered, we're just so incredibly grateful. So thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go with Counsel Pierce, because you still have your hand up, but I know there was others.
No, there was, I have, this is another question.
Okay.
Or a comment. First of all, I do want to thank the mayor and council for their thoughtful comments. We all, it did seem we all went out and did our own research and reached our own opinions. So it's what's nice about working with this body of people. So if I understand, our message is we've let the mandate sunset. We urge people to become vaccinated if they're not already. And are we urging the continued use of masks, or is that confusing? Are we leaving that out?
I think if someone else has said, it's really up to the individual, it's up to individual business, it's up to individual, I mean, I told you what I was going to do, so.
Yeah. No, but I mean, from a messaging standpoint. And I guess that's for the city manager, if it's going to go in his letter.
No, it's, this is, this is a letter to the users of our recreational facilities, that's what the letter is. The, the getting information out to the general public, that will go, my, my thought, and I thought what I heard from the council was continuing to encourage vaccination. And that's something that we, we would do. But I didn't want to get into telling people they should or shouldn't wear masks or anything like that. Regarding our own physical facilities, we can direct people what they're going to do and how they're going to operate in our facilities. Outside of that, you make your own decisions, and each business, each coffee shop can decide on their own whether or not to require people to wear masks or not. I was going to leave, I was going to leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Sexton?
I was going to respond to Counsel Pierce's comment. And that's part of the reason why I suggested potentially offering a resolution that would encourage people to get vaccinated and encourage people who are unvaccinated to continue to wear masks when indoors.
Thank you. Counsel Keach, did you have any answers? Okay, who did I miss? And then I apologize, because titles jump around real fast, and hands up and hands down. I would just share with you that I printed off the state website, the best practices from the Economic Reopening Task Force, and it takes you through the 12, you know, things that they recommend in terms of communication, vaccinations, and social distancing, face masks. That's generally what I refer to, is, you know, that kind of, it's fairly comprehensive. Counsel Champlin?
Your Honor, was Counsel Fantasy making a motion? And is he seeking a second?
If I can get a second, I'll make a motion.
If you make a motion, I'll make a second.
I will make that motion.
I will second.
So why don't you repeat what you, your motions?
Thank you. So my motion was to adopt a resolution encouraging people who are eligible to get vaccinated, and for those who are not vaccinated to continue to wear masks when indoors, for those who are able to, I guess.
And Counsel Champlin, you second their motion?
I do, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Counsel Chod?
Thank you. Reason that I ordered to let the mandate expire is because I appreciate Counsel Fantasy's motion, but I think that- Uh, but I think that what we're doing is really just that. I mean, I think that we're, without, without the motion, I think that's what we're suggesting. That was really why I voted the way I did. Uh, much as I appreciate the comments that we heard tonight, and I kind of tend to agree that we are, it seems like we're so close, uh, to reaching a, a much more comfortable safety zone for people, for young children, for others out there who are, who have these, uh, concerns and who have serious health issues, and who may not have had an opportunity for whatever reason to go and get their vaccination yet. Um, but, um, it seems like the national and the state strategy has been, uh, to move in a different direction toward vaccination. That's been, I think, pretty clear. So, um, there are, for, I, I think the folks probably have already gotten that message, frankly. And if they haven't, they're just, they're not gonna be inclined to, uh, go forward, uh, regardless of, I think, what city council says. So, you know, I think kind of, you know, that, that, that train has already left the station, in my, my view. And, uh, again, I think that, uh, it's, it, it has always been up to people out there to, to kind of do the right thing. Uh, and we're counting on them to continue to do that now. Wear a mask if you feel that you need to, uh, and you feel more comfortable doing that, and certainly get the vaccination.
Thank you. Uh, Council Keach.
Uh, Council Todd covered it, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I, I'll, I'll vote for it. I just, I, I think it's more important that we, um, or equally as important, uh, not just a statement that sounds all nice amongst, you know, the fourteen of us, but that we actually, um, use our, uh, public information officer to help get the message out through all the social media outlets we have. I think it's incumbent upon all of us, um, and all of our networks that we have and the access to individuals we have to promote that, uh, individuals, uh, you know, amongst our friends and family and neighbors and such. I think it's important that, you know, our fire department, uh, you know, as they, they see people, they encourage people. I, I think we all need to be, you know, actively engaging and encouraging people to do it. I think a statement is nice, but, you know, it, it's really the actions that gotta follow it, so I'll vote for it, it sounds like a nice thing. Um, but it's really gonna be, we gotta, we gotta push, it's us, it's us, and it's our friends and such. I have, uh, Council Grady Sexton and Council Fantasy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I think, uh, I certainly support the concept, that's what I envision, uh, a community, uh, campaign to be. I, unless we have a draft, a working draft from Counselor Fantasy, I'm not sure logistically how we would, um, vote on specific wording of a, a resolution this evening.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a personal privilege. I know that, Council Fantasy, you keep calling it a resolution. It's basically a motion, is what it's, it's basically a statement, just simply emotions. Uh, that's the way I took it. Um, I appreciate Counsel Grady Sexton. Typically, when we have resolutions, we do have language and it's in front of us, review it. I, I just. I'll leave it at that. Council Fantasy?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Grady Sexton. You're correct, it's not technically a resolution, I have not presented any, um, language to the council and I appreciate that feedback. Um, the reason I was offering it was really because I want to give the city manager and the city staff some direction to, uh, really do what everybody's looking for, which is to, uh, use our platform to encourage people. Um, so I, I wa- I wasn't really intending to, uh, necessarily, uh, force anybody to adopt particular language, just give direction to, uh, the city manager.
Thank you. Um, Council Grady Sexton, did you, you still?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, just very briefly, if, so this would be, uh, essentially a motion to allow or to direct the city manager to include that statement, um, in the letter that he issues, for instance, uh, to the community?
So my understanding of the letter is that that letter is just going to people who are using the community center and, and, and maybe using the Parks and Recreation Services. Um, I was anticipating something broader that could be broadcast through our various, uh, channels to, to try and encourage people.
Um, Counselor Bouchard, do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, I'm still not clear, are we, um, voting on, on, to allow the city or to encourage, direct the city manager to put out language, maybe in his newsletter and our social, in all our media platforms to, um, encourage people to follow best practices of, uh, wearing a mask and social distancing? Is, is that what you're envisioning, Counselor?
I'm gonna have Council Fantasy answer that, cause why don't you try it?
Sure, so, uh, my motion was to encourage people who can to get vaccinated and to encourage those who are not vaccinated to continue wearing a mask, well, as specified by the CVC in, in circumstances where they can't social distance. Inside, sorry.
Council Rice Hawkins?
Thank you. As much as I appreciate the sentiment of, um, this statement and direction, I feel comfortable that the city staff can elevate those messages on social media and in our publications. Um, and I also think that it's a little, uh, hard to, uh, have the conversation we had earlier tonight and then encourage people to wear masks, um, if they can't socially distance. So I, um, I think that probably we should just let this one go.
Uh, Council Kinsel, sorry, I had your hand up.
Thank you, uh, Your Honor. Uh, I'm not going to support this motion for two reasons. And one is that we've already decided we want to encourage people to get vaccinated and to send that message out as a city. The other part about, it sounds to me almost like the CDC who said, oh, nobody needs to wear a mask anymore. And then, you know, abruptly, and then later, um, okay, uh, maybe you should for these reasons. It just doesn't make, I think it confuses the whole issue all over again, so I'm not gonna vote for the motion.
This is a really, uh, this is fascinating. Uh, so in my mind, I see a difference between mandates and encouraging. And what I thought we did away with was the, the state, the government saying you must. This is, we are encouraging you to have good hygiene, to wash your hands, to, you know, distance when you can, to, you know, those type of best practices. So I, I don't know, I'm, I think I was pretty candid when I said, I don't think it does a whole lot. I don't think it hurts either, um, but. Okay, are we ready? Uh, Council Rice Hawkins? Okay, you guys flipping with your hands so fast.
I, I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Council Boucher.
So, uh, if, if this passes, and then are we gonna work on language?
No.
All right, that, that was my real concern. Okay, all right, that was what I really wanted.
Really, to be blunt, this is Counselor Fantasy made a statement and he would like to ask all to endorse it, period.
Okay.
It's named by Council Champlin. No more, no less.
Thank you, that was what.
That's accurate, okay. Council Rice Hawkins, do you have your hand up again? Cause I'm gonna, yeah, there we go, I got you, I got you.
I do, I'm trying to figure out where we're at, so, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't think we can, I don't think we can vote on anything. I don't think we have a clear statement. I think that the city staff is going to encourage folks. I think that this body has made it clear that we think people should get vaccinated and that they should follow public health guidelines, uh, as they see fit. And I think we should just move on.
Council Fantasy, do you want to vote or not?
Yeah, there's a motion pending, let's vote.
I, I was giving you an option to, to take it back. All right, we've had enough discussion, we are ready to vote. Uh, Mr. Manager, could you call the roll, please?
Point of order.
Please, Council Rice Hawkins?
Uh, what is the actual statement we're voting on?
Mr. Fantasy, would you like to repeat your?
Sure, so the statement was, uh, we encourage people who can to get vaccinated and for those who are not vaccinated to, uh, wear masks when they're inside and they can't social distance.
Are we clear on the statement? That's one.
I'm not sure what he means by who can get vaccinated.
Well, there, there are some people currently under twelve years old who cannot get vaccinated.
Okay, that's a clarification, I was just wondering what, yeah, cause that was confusing me in terms of, that's a pretty broad statement, who can, thank you.
Do you prefer eligible? I guess eligible.
Eligible is much more clarifying, thank you.
Here we go.
And I'll second the clarified language.
Did you acknowledge me, Mayor? I did, I did, I was also rolling my.
That's, that's part of the problem I have with this. I mean, in principle, I agree with Counselor, um, Fantasy, but, um, the language is just so broad and, um, I think in principle, we all agree with that, but it just, um, it's too wide open for me personally.
Thank you. Uh, Council Kennison, and I'll recognize you if you answer one question first. Was that a cat outside walking in front of you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, I feel better.
Well, I wasn't alone after all. I, um, think we've gone from the absurd to the sublime here with this, and though I, I support the sentiment, it just seems so unnecessary, we're already there, so.
Okay.
Why don't we just, let's just drop it.
Well said. Okay, so we have motions been seconded in front of us, um, and we're not gonna repeat what is said again. And, uh, Mr. Manager, you're gonna call the roll, how's that?
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
No.
Counselor Keach.
No.
Counselor Kennison.
No.
Counselor Kretovic.
No.
Counselor Mattson.
No.
Counselor Nian.
No.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Duh.
What was that?
That's a half, that's a half, that's a half of a vote. Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Werner.
No.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
I vote for this and apple pie.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
No way. If I'm correct, the motion fails on a tie.
Seven to seven, we're going into overtime.
There is no overtime. Okay, I believe that concludes our business from this evening, unless you're saying so. Counselor Kretovic?
I'm so sorry, Your Honor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, a rare occurrence happened in Ward Three today, it probably happened in Ward Two as well. Um, and it was frightening. We had two, um, US Air Force planes fly over our neighborhood at a very low heights, to the, to the detriment of our neighborhood in that our houses were shaking. It was frightening. I worked from home, I could not see what was coming, I thought planes were crashing in our neighborhood. And I only know from our neighbors who were outside and saw the planes, they suspect that it, they were C-130s, but they were well below the five hundred foot, um, ceiling that is anticipated over a residential area. And I would really appreciate on behalf of our wards in this area of the city that if we could follow up with, uh, the National Guard or whoever it was that was flying those planes, it was frightening. And I have no other word for it, because you didn't know what was coming, but it was big enough that it left a shadow over our houses and our yards. Um, I was on a client call at the time, they heard it coming, and they heard things rattling in my home, and I was scared. And so was the neighborhood. So I would appreciate if you could follow up and find out exactly what happened. That we had such a low, two, low-flying planes, um, in, over our city today.
Did, did you have a time?
I will get a time for you, because I know the client call I was on.
Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll do.
Uh, Council Nian.
I just wanted to say, those are the sights and sounds of freedom, so embrace them, uh, Counselor Kretovic.
Wow, okay. I can't wait to be back in public, personally, everybody, it's gonna be fun. Um, all right, so we have no further business, uh, can I get a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Which made it second to adjourn, uh, we're gonna call the roll, and then we are going to, um, leave to go to the non-meeting. Uh, so, Counsel, Mr. Manager, can you, uh, call the roll, please?
Loudly. Um, Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin. And get, um, was that a yes?
Yes, that was a yes, I'm sorry.
Let's be my end.
No, you know what happened? I was on, on mute and I habitually ended up muting myself, so I apologize, but yes.
Ca- Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Werner.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, uh, great, we'll see everybody in the non-meeting meeting. Thanks.